All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Program Personnel Committee meeting. If we could stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, just gonna fly through the agenda real quick. We'll have an invitation for public comments, then for discussion, the D-128 Racial Equity Diversity and Inclusion Policy Report, Board Policy Report Second Reading, Educational Tours, there are four of them, Employment of Employees, and then Future Attendance Items. So, I would like to open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone here wishing to address the board? Okay, seeing none. Let's go for discussion, D-128 Racial Equity Diversity and Inclusion Policy. Is this Larry? All right. Is the projector even on?
Good evening. I am excited to share with you our second equity policy update for the year as we continue to monitor the metrics within our policy for racial diversity, equity, and inclusion for Community High School District 128. This is another of the series of updates that the district provides to the board and to the community on where we are. This evening's update, I'd like to particularly, specifically thank some individuals, our equity coordinators, Tara Young and Matt Carnstead, who were integral in putting this presentation together. Also, Charlotte Eames and the whole data team who supported us in getting this data to provide these metrics to you all. Our instructional coaches who've worked throughout the year providing equity-based professional development for our staff. Mr. Dan Stanley in the Business Office for their contributions in the work that they've done towards resources for equity. Ms. Mary Toderick, who has provided us an opportunity to collect data from our community around our equity journey. Our affinity club sponsors and members who were a part of some of the information that I'll share with you tonight, as well as our underrepresented families who participated. And of course, our superintendent and board president, who were active members of several committees that we will talk about this evening. So this policy, this policy update will update us on four areas. Next slide, Dan, please. Of our 11 commitments, tonight, we will look at student success. We continuously come back to student success because it is such a big part of the work that we do as a school district. We're also gonna look at our equitable resources for the first time this year, and our community partnerships for the first time this year, and give you some updates on some of the work that we're doing there to move those metrics. And then we're going to take a look at our equity-focused professional learning opportunities that we have provided to our staff, both optional and mandatory. Next slide, Dan. So let's start with commitment three. And so we want to pick up with student success, where we were from Charlotte's presentation on the report card. One of the metrics that we highlighted in our policy was the data from the ISBE School Report Card. Charlotte did a really great job of providing some high-level data for us on that. In our last board meeting, she gave us two updates. And tonight, we're gonna dive a little deeper into that report card with a lens from racial equity and how our students are doing as we compare subgroups. And then we're also gonna monitor and report on some of the grade distributions since we just closed out Semester One of the 2023, 20, 2022, what year is this? 2023, 2024 school year. And so that's some really recent data that we've been able to collect from our local assessment pieces. Next slide, please, Dan. And so we've shared with you where we are in terms of our SAT data. Now, the SAT is our nationally-normed assessment that we are able to collect data from. We utilize it in a number of ways as it relates to our student placement. And so it's important that we look at this data in terms of how our subgroups perform when compared one to another. And so we do see some disparities with our African-American and Latino populations. It is important to note that this data is representative of the entire district and not of any individual school. So district-wide, we're seeing that our African-American students, only 25% of them are meeting proficiency in reading when they take the 11th grade assessment for SAT. Slightly higher than our African-American group is our Latino group. But we do see that these two groups are performing at a disparity when we compare them to the other groups of students that we have there. And so we want to dive a little bit deeper into what does that proficiency gap look like? Next slide, please. And so comparing the groups' white to black comparison in the top chart, and then our white to Hispanic comparison in the bottom chart. We're looking over the course of the last three years of data. And we're looking at the percent proficient for our white students. That middle column is comparing, is the subgroup for Black and African-American in the top and Hispanic or Latino in the bottom. And then that last column tells us what's the gap there in terms of proficiency for those, for those groups when we compare them to their white counterparts. And what we can see is that over the last three years, that gap has been inconsistent from year to year. Now, this data does not track one cohort of students over time, but it rather, it looks at the each individual class. So the class of 2023 compared to the class of 2022, class of 2021. So these are different groups of students each year. And so what we're seeing there is that over the, over the last three years, it really has been inconsistent with any growth or any, any increase in gap. So it just is sporadic in terms of how these groups are performing from year to year. Some years, our African-American students perform better. Some years, our African-American students perform worse. But consistently, we see our white students performing the same over the course of those three years. So that gap just moves, and the dependent variable that changes there is the performance of the Black and African-American and the Hispanic or Latino students. Next slide, please. And so proficiency, though, is made up of these levels that SAT has decided on. And so Level One is that lowest level. It means that the student has partially met the standard and has demonstrated minimal understanding. Then Level Two means that they are approaching, they are approaching proficiency but still have not yet reached mastery of that particular standard. And so Level One and Level Two both indicate that the student is not at proficiency. Once the student meets standards at Level Three, they are considered proficient. And then Level Four, they've exceeded the standard, so that is also proficient. So the proficient line really lies between Level Two and Level Three, right? But these levels give us a better indication as to where our students are performing. Next slide, please. And so when we look at our African-American students, our previous data showed that 75% of them were not proficient. When we dive deeper into that, 50% of that 75 are performing at Level One, meaning that they are demonstrating minimal understanding of the knowledge and skills needed relative to the Illinois Learning Standards. So that is concerning for us, that not only are they not proficient, but this group of students is at the very bottom level of, of performance in, in English Language Arts. 25% of them are at Level Two. And then of the 25% who do reach proficiency, meaning that they have achieved Level Three or Level Four, only 8.3% of them are at Level Four Advanced Proficiency. So we, we do have some concerning data around our African-American student performance there. Next slide, please. Now, when we compare that to our Hispanic and Latino student performance, one thing to note is that we do have a significantly larger group in Level Two, meaning that we do have opportunities for our Hispanic and Latino students who are not at proficiency yet to reach proficiency because they're closer to that bubble. And so we could push with intentionality and intentional resources or interventions, we could push the Level Two students into Level Three and therefore getting more of our Hispanic and Latino students into, into proficiency. So that's good news there. And then when we look at our Asian students, you'll see that more than half of our Asian students are exceeding the proficiency Level Four. And then a very small number of students in Level One as it relates to our Asian, Asian students. So almost the inverse of what we see with our African-American students. And then two or more, we see that the majority of them are at proficiency and reaching Levels Three and Levels Four proportionately. And then Level Two and Level One, we still have some, some students there, but overall about a third, a third, a third. And then finally, our white student performance is there where we, again, we see that the majority of those students are reaching proficiency, very, very few in Level One and, and then some students in Level Two. So our focus for academics is really to push those students who are in Level Two into Level Three and then provide some more targeted interventions for our students who are in that Level, Level One category. Next slide, please. And so now, let's take a look at mathematics in SAT. We'll see that this data in terms of proficient and non-proficient is very similar to what we saw in reading for our African-American students. As a matter of fact, it's identical in terms of the percentage of students who are at proficiency. For our Latino students, we see a slightly lower number of percentage of our Hispanic and Latino students demonstrating proficiency in math when compared to reading. And then by and large, overall, our Asian, two or more races and our white students are meeting proficiency. So again, let's take a look at the gaps that we have for mathematics. And we see the same, the same thing. Our white students, when compared to our Black students, are demonstrating more proficiency. That gap there in that third column, we're still seeing is inconsistent from year to year. Again, I do remind you that we are looking at cohort-to-cohort data. And so it's just a matter of how this particular group, class of students is performing at this particular time. But our white proficiency is remaining relatively stable while we see ebbs and flows in our African-American and Hispanic population. And so as we look into the Level One, Level Two, Level Three, Level Four data, again, identical data for our mathematics is that half of our African-American students are not performing, are performing at Level One for mathematics and 25% at Level Two. Again, identical data to, to our reading. So the, our African-American students are showing the same performance gaps in, in English as they are in math. But when we look at our Hispanic students, when we looked at reading, we saw a more significant number of them at Level Two. When we look at mathematics, though, we do see that a shift there. So we, more of our Hispanic students performing at Level One than what we saw in reading. And then a significant amount, percentage of our Hispanic students performing at Level Two. And then very few at Level Four. When we look at our Asian students, we see, again, Level Four, more than half of our students are exceeding in mathematics with Asian, with our Asian population. And still, few, few at Level One. Two or more races, again, we have the majority of our students at proficiency. And about, about a third, a little less than a third not meeting proficiency, but then a more equal distribution between Levels One and Levels Two when we look at that particular demographic. And then our white students, again, performing at proficiency, over half performing at proficiency. About 28% at Level Two, they can be moved into Level Three. And then a smaller percentage at Level One. And so that's the mathematic comparison. So that was a look at our national data trends in terms of how we're doing by, by race. So let's look at now some of our local data that we have. And that is our grade distribution from Quarter One. Now, that first column is our overall demographics. So what percentage of our student body is made up of each subgroup is there? And what we should see is proportional representation across that, that graph there. So if our African-American students make up 2% of our population, then that should be proportionately represented across the grades. So they should make up about 2% of the As, about 2% of the Bs, so forth and so on. And so what we see there is that when we look at the Ds and Fs, that there is overrepresentation of African-American students at that particular range as well as our Hispanic students at Ds and Fs. And so that's something that we are noticing as a trend for our grades by distribution. And so some opportunities that we have. Going forward, what we want to do is, as we consider our, both our national data and our local data, is utilizing our STAR data to provide focused intervention to students. STAR is the assessment that I, that is administered within our district and provides our teachers and staff with immediate assessment data from our students that will allow them to see where our students are deficient and strengths so that we can, we can target the interventions that we're providing for them in the classrooms based on the student needs. So that that can transfer into stronger performance in their average grades, their GPA, as well as better performance on the standardized assessments. Our work in the ninth-grade heterogeneous classes allowing us to identify priority standards so that our curriculum is focused on those standards that we've identified are the most frequently assessed standards or the standards that we've identified as the standards that are transferable skills that are necessary for our students to do well in, in courses as well as standardized assessments and in our local assessments. Our curriculum design is allowing us to make sure that we are providing every student with on-grade level materials that will allow each student to have an opportunity to have a robust, rigorous curriculum within their courses, regardless of placement. And then some of our targeted intervention programs, looking at our Tier Two and Tier Three interventions, which are being redesigned for us for 2024, 2023, 2024, 2024, 2025. Still a new year. And targeted interventions, looking at our PAWS program, making sure that those interventions are targeted and providing necessary supports for students in need with our PAWS program. And our literacy and math labs will allow students to get drop-in support, continue to get drop-in support as necessary. And as we identify in our curriculum areas where our students need additional reinforcement, they can get that from the interventionists in those areas. Next slide, please.
Maybe we could pause. I just think it might be helpful for the board to be able to ask a few follow-up questions about attend, before we shift to attendance?
Sure.
Any questions about student achievement, either SAT or grades, before we switch to another graphic?
I do. So Larry, when you said, am I on here? So when you said that we want to push our Level Two students into Level Three, what does that mean?
So what that means is we have students who are at Level Two, they are, are approaching proficiency.
No, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you, but I, like, I understand it means, know what Level Two versus Level Three means. What does that look like? When you say that you're pushing them, we want to push our students from Level Two into Level Three, is that a part of pushing them into a more rigorous curriculum? I understand the end goal is to have everybody at Three and Fours, but... So that's the goal, you're saying that that's the goal?
Yeah. So it's the part of our curriculum work in ensuring that we're using data to support what we're teaching in, in our classes. And so looking at a, a Level Two student, right? What are the areas where this student is close to proficiency? And providing them with individualized support so that they can work on those skills that they're almost there, right? And so just maybe, just a...
So identifying deficiencies and targeting those deficiencies to bring them up?
Sort of by student, by standard.
Yeah.
By standard. And then when you said that you were wanting to use the STAR testing data for focused interventions, what is that gonna look like?
So exactly that. So we have the SAT data, but the STAR data will give us more real-time information and will allow us, our staff, to group students based on identified areas that may be, they may be similar, so that they can provide small group instruction. They can assign them to the math or literacy drop-in labs. And we can use it to give them the additional support in, in the PAWS program or move them out of PAWS because they have demonstrated that, that mastery in those skills.
So are we talking more Tier Two or Tier Three intervention? I mean, is that something that's gonna be implemented through the classroom teacher? Or are we making plans for additional support for the classroom teacher?
We are planning to do a presentation on our Enhanced MTSS Tiered Intervention. We have had a couple different models at both Vernon Hills and Libertyville with just different staffing plans. But this year will be the first year that our plans for the fall will be to have a consistent intervention framework at both schools. So we will be forwarding a present, or delivering a presentation to the board as part of a staffing plan. But it will be redesigning the Tier One. You know, that when you say, what is the plan for this, it's, it has to be systemic and, and actually focusing on bubble students, that, that actually is difficult for me to hear because I really want to think about, no, where our work is to make sure every student is proficient. And some students are closer and some students have a further journey. But that is our goal, is for both Level One and Level Two students who are, they're not students who are performing at that level, get the instruction they need. So that's going to be clear learning targets at the Tier One instruction. Again, the students that we're seeing data for here, they did not benefit from having access to those rigorous courses. So the data that we've been looking at over the last two years showing that the gap widens actually as students participate in some of our lower-level courses, that is the data that we're seeing right now as our exit, as our 11th grade test is showing. So we aren't predicting immediate SAT improvements. They'll be slow, but that's why it's important for us to keep using grades and to keep using STAR testing as that progress monitoring tool to both help our interventions and to let us know how effective some of our other near-term progress monitoring points will be.
Because we're not seeing any significant close in the gap in two years.
Right.
So what we're doing isn't working.
Well, but we really, when you say what we're doing, what do you refer to?
I know, because I don't know what we have done.
Because we have implemented very few things. Next fall will be the first time that we're implementing the heterogeneous curriculum where we're, for Grade Nine, where we are, which, that means quite a bit. So it means not having co-taught, excuse me, not having team-taught the class where we were grouping students who had deficits. So in terms of the things that we've been doing for our equity plan, in terms of adjusting our interventions, that is, has started to be in place this year and will continue to improve. We've been working primarily on a lot of the affective parts in terms of the affinity groups that you're gonna see a lot on here. I think moving the needle on academic achievement is gonna be the one that requires the most time because it requires the most change in programming across the whole curriculum and across the whole buildings. Where things like changing our attendance protocols, making sure that we have affinity groups and other things for students, making sure that the way we implement our discipline policy is consistent across all races. Those things have a shorter runway time for implementation than some of the things that we're seeing that will influence SAT scores for 11th graders.
I guess I keep coming back to like chicken and the egg because if you have a population that 75% of them are not proficient or even meeting proficiency, is put, I don't have the answer, but it is a chicken-and-the-egg argument. I mean, just by merely putting them into a more rigorous curriculum does not, if they aren't ready to be able to access that information and that curriculum, are we setting them up for more frustration?
That would be the third bullet there, the curriculum design. We have been working all fall and will continue to work all spring with the teachers who are teaching that course to embed those Tier One interventions. When you said, what, what's the classroom teacher gonna be doing? The absolute most effective intervention is high-quality Tier One instruction. And so that's been a huge focus of our energy for this year, for last fall and will continue to be for this spring. But we'll also use the resources that used to be, according to the, the team-taught teachers, we'll repurpose those into the interventionists that we were talking about in both PAWS and the drop-in labs.
And you feel like our staff is prepared for that kind of paradigm shift? Or we're working on it?
We're working on it, absolutely.
Okay.
They're very committed that all students learn at high levels. And we have the data to show what we're doing right now isn't working. So we're gonna do everything we can to support our staff in being ready to implement a different way of helping these students meet standard.
I have a few questions. The students that we have don't derive here without history. So do we have articulation? Are we talking to our feeder districts? Are we sharing data? Do they have similar plans? I don't know if we're articulating any of this with our feeder districts.
I think that with our articulation with our feeder districts, we get information on our eighth-grade students that are coming to us. We get the teacher recommendations. And they provide us with information about each student that, that the teachers can, can implement. That's the extent of where we are right now.
And that's always been the case.
Yes.
We've been doing that for ages.
Mm-hmm.
The one thing that we would have, I say that is different, is we have for all students, not just the students who could attend on Saturday. So I think our last time, we had the Saturday PSAT, it was about 94%, which is still very high, but some of the students we needed the most information on were the ones who didn't attend. So we do have 99.9% of the students participated in testing this fall. So we have much more data about more of our students that was required for APA, but is also gonna be helpful in placing students in the appropriate support. So all students will, let's say, go into English Nine, but it's gonna say, do you need English Nine and a once-a-week meeting with a reading specialist? Or do you need English Nine and every day for 20 minutes with an interventionist? So that, we already have the data for that on every student. And we're using that to make placement recommendations into the intervention. From drop-in, meaning we, we don't have any evidence right now to place students in there, but we'll have the staff available, should they start to struggle, to enter into the tiers of intervention that, that we're expanding. From what we have this year, we'll have more next year.
Yeah, I had a similar question that I think asked before. Is, is there a way for you to, since you have that incoming ninth-grader assessment or where they are placed already, can they be put into summer school and such before they even start ninth grade? So what can you do so they're just better prepared for high school and can start that journey better than after they get here?
We do have a summer school requirement for students with IEPs who need what's called ESY Extended School Year Experience, and that's called for in their IEPs. For other students, we've had a summer academy, but the evidence to show if it's really implementing and meeting the needs of students, we haven't done all of the work we needed to collect that kind of evidence. But we are planning to redesign that particular program as we're developing the ninth-grade curriculum. So it's one of those things, we're redesigning the ninth-grade curriculum so it is accessible to all students. And as we have the learning targets and some of the common assessments and all of those things developed, it'll be much easier for us to then get data from our eighth, eighth-grade feeder districts. Because again, they use different progress monitoring tools, but they could report to us areas of strength and areas of deficit by learning standard. We just have not had that kind of communication yet. It's been definitely more holistic about recommendations, about, I would say, SEL needs or students who might have attendance concerns or other kinds, oops. Other kinds of behavior and/or attendance. Again, we'll, we're gonna get to attendance next because that also plays such an important role in student success. They have to be here to learn. So, you know, I don't want to downplay the information we get from our eighth-grade feeders on profile of students. feeders on profile of student attendance and other things because that greatly impacts their learning. But we definitely now will have more specific information on what might be the deficit in math. Is it numeracy or is it number sense or is it fractions? That is not, we haven't drilled down in the past to get that as focused of information from our feeder districts.
I've got.
Oh, go ahead.
You sure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I've got some questions and this may come across as more of like a commentary than a question. So I'm looking at the information and, and I understand how vital it is to our diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives and I, and not questioning kind of our, our charge with that. But some of this, some of the data and some of our goals surrounding that to me seem a bit in conflict with some of our strategic plan goals, one of which being multiple pathways. And so when I consider multiple pathways and that goal of providing students with perhaps different pathways that don't end in a four-year university experience, and then I see that kind of the benchmark that we're using is the junior year SAT score. And that SAT is also informing goals of our curriculum. Things seem to be at odds or in conflict a bit. And so I'm, I'm wondering if perhaps we're not necessarily missing an opportunity, but for students who, and I, I don't, I, I'm not suggesting we lower our expectations or bars, but for students who identify kind of early on that they're interested in a pathway that's not the outcome of an SAT score, you know? Are we missing an opportunity for them? And does it kind of force our educators to teach more toward a test than anything else? Are we kind of highlighting that as the end goal? Is that we're hoping for better proficiency on the SAT as kind of this mark that comes through junior year just to show us that we've done our job as educators? So again, part question, part commentary, part a personal concern for kind of the education system that, that we're trying to support.
And so when we survey our students, specifically our students of color, 90% of them indicate that it is their intention to go to a four or two-year university. And the SAT is often the gatekeeper for financial aid and admission into a four, two-year institution. And so knowing that that is the, the goal, the dream of, of our students, we want to make sure that we're supporting that as one of our multiple pathways. And so in order to do that, we have to prepare them for the level of rigor and assessment that they are going to see on, on the SAT. Because it's, 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 it's the test a day that they have to take. Not necessarily saying that we agree with that being the one indicator many schools and universities are moving away from. The SAT is just that, is just that one piece of information for that, for that very reason. But it also gives us an indicator of, it says that this particular student is college or career ready based on, 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 on the standard that we have set. It is also the indicator that, that state of Illinois uses for high schools to, to, to judge and measure the effectiveness of, of our instruction. So it's, it's difficult to, to negate the SAT while also we, we, I do acknowledge and agree with, with, with what, much of what you said, right? As, even as we think about equity, considering how cultural biases may exist in, in standardized testing, right? There's a, a body of research on, on that as well. And so it, it, but it puts us in a place where we have to figure out, how do we do both? How do we acknowledge the students' multiple pathway and, and interest as well as provide a pathway for students to have the ultimate access, accessibility to their post-secondary careers?
I, I would echo everything that you said, Larry. Thank you for sharing that. One other point, I always try to remind the, the pathway that we sometimes think of multiple paths as having less rigorous requirements. The requirements to get into the HVAC system require higher reading and higher math scores than many other bachelor's degrees do. So I think that's one other thing when we think about multiple paths, it's not about higher rigor or lower rigor. Every student needs basic math and literacy requirements to be a functioning adult. And I do think that that is what the SAT is measuring. I think what it was 10 years ago is pretty traditional content acquisition. The changes that it made that a lot, that prompted Illinois to switch from the ACT to the SAT because they felt it was better aligned with the standards. So I, I think one of the things that might be helpful is if we just keep thinking of that SAT as the measure our state is using on if our students are proficient for our standards. And sort of let go of the idea that it was primarily a college entrance exam before. Because I think that's, could be holding back some of our thinking about how this tool can really help guide us. And again, it's not teachers teaching to the SAT test. It's teachers teaching to what the state of Illinois says is required literacy standards. And so I think if we, if we can, as much as possible, use some of our language that way and, and make sure our thinking is aligned to what we know, that is what our equity, equity plan talks about, is ensuring all students are proficient at reading, math, science and, and other standards. We just happen to use an assessment tool that used to be primarily a college entrance exam.
I appreciate that explanation from both of you. And if I may just ask kind of one more question related, but slide 19 for me, I'm, I'm not a charts and graphs person all the time. This one, this one is giving me stress a little bit just because I, it's a, it's a me thing. It's a me problem, no one else. But can you comment on kind of the alignment of the grades by race versus, or how they relate to the data we have, the data spreads for the SAT results? So you may have made that comment before, but like when I look at this grade distribution, would you say that's pretty well reflected also in those 11th grade SAT results? And then I think Denise just really clarified a point that we are aligning our curriculum, probably always kind of have been looking at our Illinois State Standards. That's, that's education. But, you know, to, to build out our curriculum. So could you just talk about kind of the connection between the grades data and the SAT data?
Yeah. So ideally what we should see, that our grades should also be aligned to our standards. And so our grade should be an indicator of how well a student will do on the SAT because the, the standards and the skills are the same, right? So if, if, if a student is mastering any specific or particular skill in a class, that mastery should transfer into mastery on any, any assessment, whether that is SAT, STAR, or any of our local assessments, it should transfer there. Right now, we do not have that necessarily, we, we've not collected or had some intentional work outside of the work that we're doing right with the ninth graders to ensure that alignment is there. The, the work right now with the ninth grade heterogeneous class is to ensure that our curriculum standards, that we've identified our priority standards and our transferable standards to ensure that, that we have a curriculum and assessments in our, in our classrooms that are reflective of the skills and standards that they, they will see there. And so there should be that, there should be that alignment there in the future that, that we, I can't say for certain exists right now.
I think maybe one other point, you're talking about the alignment between standards and, and test scores. I think your question was alignment between the grade data and the SAT data.
Prevented that the curriculum is aligned with Illinois State Standards, which are also aligned with the SAT.
Right, right. But what I see from this data is that students who are currently earning Ds and Fs, and again, this is not in any particular, this is just overall grades, is disproportionate, meaning we have 12% of our students are Hispanic, yet they are earning 27 and 40-some percent of the Ds. They're overrepresented in grades that would, that would communicate to us that they are not achieving proficiency yet in those courses. So if we're looking at course grades as some of those progress monitoring tools to say, are these kids going to be successful on the 11th grade assessment? Right now, currently our grades would be saying they're also showing disproportionate, that we have students who are minorities are also receiving lower grades in the courses currently.
One question there though, right? Like when you're using percentage as a standard, that is a little bit deceptive or tricky at times, right? Because if you have a, a particular race that is in a minority, a very small change in the grades or level would change that percentage by a lot. Right? It might sometimes take just even one student to go from one grade to the other to change the percentages dramatically. So we probably need to look at numbers a little bit differently and not just in terms of percentages because that doesn't tell the full story. It might just tell the wrong story in there. So have to be careful.
I, I do think that keeping in mind the number of students in these groups is one, and that's why we're presenting district data. So it's not, it's to increase the sample size because there is small populations at each site. So when we look at district data, it is somewhat combating the really small sample size and the over impact it can have. But that definitely is something that I think accounts for that volatility that we're seeing from year to year where the white students, where we have hundreds of students in that group, it's only changing by a few percentage. But what's staying the same is the gap. And so I, I think that that's really the data that to me, we need to be keeping our eye on. The other thing to note is that we are accountable in the state of Illinois for those percentages. So, you know, it doesn't matter if it's four kids in that group or 40 kids or 400, that is the accountability metrics that the state of Illinois uses. So I think we have to look at both percentage and number of students.
Okay, I'm going to jump in. So my, it's a concern, it's not really a question. I have a, a number of friends who are currently teaching in a model where it's a heterogeneous classroom, where they have populations of students who have been separated out before, who aren't now. And he has reading levels, they have, I'm thinking of one in particular right now, of students that are reading at the third grade level and students that are reading at just that like ninth grade level. And that's, that's a huge disparity in abilities within the classroom, backgrounds, what they can do, what they can read. So it's the, my concern is the training that we're giving to the teachers to be able to accommodate teaching in a heterogeneous classroom. And then the support. So for example, that classroom teacher is going to have to provide the data that's necessary for someone to say that that student needs to go to PAWS or to one-on-one intervention. So beyond just teaching that day, the teacher's also going to have to figure out the eight or nine or 10 kids in any particular class that are going to need any particular intervention. That just takes time. So what supports are we going to be giving to those teachers who now have a workload that's greater than the workload of other teachers when it comes to just reporting out on kids? If I'm an AP teacher, I don't have too many kids that I'm going to be assigning extra time to, to go to PAWS just because those students have tested into a higher level of rigor in curriculum. They're not going to be remedial. So.
I guess I would maybe push back on that a little, only because our EOS program is identifying students for whom this would be their first AP class. So I do think that when I imagine the supports that our teachers are going to need to meet the needs of diverse learners, I think that's almost every teacher in our, in our building. There'll be greater need at some of the earlier level at ninth grade courses, and that is why we're giving them time to work together this year to write the curriculum and to receive some additional training. But it's also why we would invest some of that human capital in additional intervention positions. It, it won't be up to individual teachers to say, Lisa, you need this, this, because we have STAR testing. And then they're also writing assessments that have bystander and success indicators. So their normal classroom assessments at the end of a unit will help identify Lisa needs this because her performance on this part of this project or this assessment tool showed this. That will be easily communicated then to the drop in lab or the PAWS person. It's because it's not every teacher doing everything in isolation randomly that we're having them work together, that the system could, could, not probably, I've seen it work at other school districts where it's not every teacher working in isolation. It's PLC teams coming together and saying, when we gave that assessment last Friday, which kids needed help on writing their thesis statement and which kids rocked on it? Okay, great. Let's do some tier one intervention here in the classroom. And after we try that, if there's students who still need that support on that writing task, that's the students that we would recommend for the drop in lab. It is actually a part of what high school PLCs is all about. You served on effective PLCs. That was some of the work that isn't in addition. That's the core work of being a teacher. So I, I just think that it's, we haven't necessarily had that be the focus of our PLC work in the past because we haven't had an intervention place to even send the students to. It's almost like each part of this, of the cogs are coming together and ninth grade is going to be where we have the curriculum, where we have the assessments, where we have the intervention people to come together and collaborate. But it, it's, that's why we're working so hard this year to make that happen.
Okay. I'm good. Are there any other questions?
I interrupted you and I didn't mean to, but I was just thinking, you know, thinking about what you said, Cara, with multiple pathways, we're talking about proficiency and our charge is to educate all of our students in proficiency, not superior, you know? So my expectation is it doesn't matter what pathway, that all of our students have the opportunity and the possibility of being proficient. So I think that's, you know, that, that should be our goal 100%.
Yep, agreed.
So I apologize for interrupting.
And it, and it will be one of the things that we're measured on as we, as, as the state moves forward in identifying, each year, we should be at a certain level of our, all of our students meeting proficiency. And so that's going to increase from here. And so yes, it's, it's something that will be measured on, on by the state. Is that as a district, what percentage of our students are meeting proficiency and are we meeting the goal set by the state, the target set by the state?
But I guess one thing that makes me so proud is this policy called for that even before those tables of, it's, in the next 10 years, how are we going to get all students to 90% proficient? This policy had the expectation and required administration to report this to you back in 2019. So I, I, excuse me, 2021 time warp there. I, I just think that we are committed to making sure we're not only saying we want all kids to achieve at high levels, we're also making sure you hear evidence of that and where we are moving forward. So yes, we have external accountability by the state, but this policy is also our internal accountability.
If you wouldn't mind, will you address, because next year is going to really be the first year of the ninth grade heterogeneous classes and it's only for one subject?
No, it would be for English, math and biology. And some students also take social studies ninth grade, but not all, but we also are working on that curriculum.
And for some students, four classes. So since the next school year, 24, 25 will be the first year that that's implemented. And we're looking at all of these four things identified on the screen as opportunities that we're doing to move the needle. What's realistic in terms of seeing the data start to change? So I, I wouldn't.
So I wouldn't expect, and I wanna be sure we set the expectation clearly of, it, it's like a big giant cruise ship that we're slowing down and adjusting the direction. And that doesn't happen in one year. So next year, it'll be for ninth grade.
Right.
Then that will expand. And then we're gonna start holding the system accountable for producing results that would look like closing the gaps. Those ninth graders aren't gonna take the SAT for two years. So I just wanna be sure we set an expectation that's clear for us and for the, for the public as to when, when really will we start to see changes so that we can expand, adjust, expand, and, and just be realistic about the results.
And if I could just add, I think, thanks for saying that, cuz I was about to sort of go there myself, is I would also like to see how you're going to track progress for that cohort by cohort because you have the ninth graders who will be incoming, who are gonna get some of these, you know, instructions. Well, how, you're gonna baseline them and then, you know, how did they do in, in the 10th? And then eventually they'll take the SAT in the 11th. And like to see how are you tracking kind of that group versus, I think, when we have a mixed cohort where some had the benefit and some didn't, it's a little hard to say how, how are you progressing?
So to respond to, to both concerns, the data that's reported on the school report card is 11th grade, is 11th grade data. And so when we talk about heterogeneous class, we're talking about next year's ninth grade students. The data on the report card will not reflect that, as you, as you, as you indicated. But what we will have and what we can track will be that STAR data. So we will be able to collect, where are those students when they come into us at ninth grade? This is a beginning of the year baseline diagnostic data that we have with them. Then we would provide for them instruction over the course of the first semester. And then in, in winter, they would take their middle of the year assessment. That would allow us to see how effective was our instruction for those ninth grade students from the time that they came to us into where we are mid-year. And again, they'll do that same thing at the end of the year. So that will give us an apples-to-apples comparison and something that we could report out to, to you all in terms of how effective wa- was the heterogeneous work, right? Did we see these students grow from where they came to us at the beginning of the year to, to when they left at the end of the year? Did they grow academically?
One, one other tool that we'll have for ninth grade, and again, this is going back to the presentation that Charlotte delivered, in addition to the 11th grade, we also have PSAT nine, or PSE 910. So we'll have it the fall of their eighth grade year, then a year and a half later, we'll have it the spring of their ninth grade year and the spring of their 10th grade year prior to the spring of their 11th grade year. So because we invest in that, that is one additional progress monitoring tool. So we have grades. Once we have more common assessments, that will be comparing apples to apples. We'll have STAR, which will be three times a year for all students and more frequently for those receiving intervention. And then we'll have the exit one, the, the SAT at the end. So we will have multiple measures and I'm hoping that as the course teams work, we continue to find even more capstone experiences and other things like that that we would say could be something that, that would be worthy of reporting to the board on an annual basis.
And again, that's why that, that standards alignment is so key. So that when we are assessing in our classrooms, we're getting reliable data on how students are performing in relationship to that particular skill that we should also see when they take the STAR, which would be aligned to those same skills and standards as the SAT. And when they take that suite of PSAT or SA, PSAT eight, nine, we should see like consistency throughout there because of the strong alignment to, the, the one thing that is weaved in between all of those things are the skills and the standards. And so the stronger alignment that we have in our curriculum and our assessments, we should see, it will be an indicator for how students will perform on that, on that final SAT. But again, you won't see that data on the report card until that cohort of students gets to, gets to 11th grade.
So 24, 25 is gonna be the pilot year for ninth graders. So 25, 26, when they're 10th graders, both the 10th graders and the new ninth graders will be in that system. So it will take four full years for all of our students to be receiving this type of evaluation and instruction.
Our, our plan that we presented to you was to focus on the ninth and 10th grade. And then because 11th and 12th grade have so many classes that are together, that would be that third year of implementation. So our goal is to have no more team taught classes in the junior and senior year, that three years out, cuz we'll have already had two years of understanding what the students need and making the adjustments in the curriculum. And just by attrition, we know that there'll be fewer and fewer students among that population. So we felt we could do two years at once because, again, a lot of those students are in some of the same kinds of courses.
So just to be crystal clear, it could be three or four years before we see meaningful differences on these, these numbers that we're looking at tonight. When we look at them, in three years, we'll be able to see how our interventions and how the systemic changes are affecting those subgroups.
For SAT achievement, there are a few other areas on the state report card that will show some of our intermediate progress. If you recall, Charlotte did a presentation on the Equity Continuum and where we had dropped down in one area. One of the areas we dropped down in was student, students of color participation in advanced coursework. So that was one area. I think we went from a 1.9 to a 1.2 or something like that. So that is something that as we show increased enrollment and students aren't at, students of color aren't placed in lower level courses, that they're on grade level or taking honors in AP or dual credit courses, that will be one progress that will show immediately because they take our enrollment data every year. So again, it's not the main achievement one, but it will be showing progress on us making sure every student has opportunity to rigorous coursework.
But I just wanna make sure I understand. So entering freshmen for 24, 25 will have an eighth grade entering PSAT that you said had 99% participation. So when we're sitting here next year, when they will be having at the end of the year a PSAT nine, we should be able to compare their entering PSAT eight into their nine. So that can be a part, even though it's not a part of our report card from the state, that is something internally, we can be looking at, is the gap closing, widening, staying still? And then going forward, not only will we have that entering ninth grade, but then we will have now a 10th grade that will have had two years opportunity.
Yes.
So internally, we can be comparing that, even though it's not on the report card.
Correct.
Which I'd much rather be spending more time about, talking about, is it working? And so in your experience, did you find that as you had heterogeneous classes and you've had experience, are we gonna be investing in more personnel in the form of intervention? I mean, do you need more people to do this? Or is it a redistribution of people?
It's a redistribution of people. One of the things that, or actually at our Labor Management Committee meeting, we are, the topic for Thursday morning's meeting is looking at the recommendation from ISPE for the Fair Funding Model and what, how many math teachers should you have? How many intervention people should you have based on what they say are an effective program? The tentative plan that we have is definitely over what the ISB funding model would be recommending for both our classroom teachers, so our class, our original class sizes is smaller, but also what they recommend for reading specialists at the secondary level or math interventionists at the secondary level. Our preliminary plan is already exceeding what those guidelines would be.
From my experience, it was not more people, it was less time. So I had to spend more time reporting out to our support which students required what interventions.
Which left you with less time to instruct, is what you're saying.
I had less time, yes. So I'm interested to see how STARS helps us with that. But, I mean, in the old days, you would just say, Timmy, you need to go get more help. Go to the Resource Center. And now we have tests and the ability to, to have some data collected that might take some of that burden off. I hope so, cuz it's, I mean, just reporting out on your IEPs. If you have a large number of IEPs, those teachers have to take a lot of time to... I don't, I don't know if every building does the same, but every week I had to report on every one of my students that had an IEP.
That is not, that is not the current practice in our district.
Okay.
I just have one question that came up to my mind through all of this is, what do we do with the students who did not have the proficiency levels at ninth, at 11th grade, but they still have one year left of high school? Is there a way to kinda catch them up before they graduate? Or what's the, what's that plan for, what's the plan for those students in the last year of high school?
I think, again, we use this data for our, for our course placement. So for our senior, senior year, those students who are not performing at proficiency are placed in, in courses that, like a college writing course to sort of give them an opportunity to remediate whatever skills they may be deficient prior to graduating. So it's similar to what we've, what we've been doing is providing an opportunity in our classes and in our curriculum for a course for the students based on where their, where their performance level is right now or at the, at the time of course recommendation to try to remediate those, those deficiencies that they have.
It can be difficult to use that assessment information for placement because it comes so much later. So the junior assessment, they take it in April, we get the data, but they've already made their course selection for senior year. And actually, by the time we get the data on individual students, it's August. So it can, it, it informs, I think, we look at the trajectory of students and try to make sure that they are receiving ongoing intervention. But I do think that's an area of improvement for our intervention system would be as we get that data over the summer to do some more intentional support mapping of the students in addition to placement. So again, that, that's something that is not part of our current practice, taking the data of the individual students who aren't proficient and putting together a support plan. But that's something we definitely need to do.
Yeah, I think, to me, it's almost like when you enter ninth grade and you create, like, here's my four-year plan, the desired state, you almost wanna build something like that for students who might have an achievement gap, right? That was my only question. Cuz the SAT is a point in time thing and no one just gets to be less proficient only in the test. They got there over time.
Yes.
So it's just a metric in their entire journey. I was just wanting to make sure that we still have one year to catch them up after that so they still graduate with the skills.
Let's go into the next.
Okay. And so when we look at our attendance by race and ethnicity, we do see consistency across all groups except for our Black and African-American students last year were slightly lower than each of the other groups. But when we look at our attendance for last semester, we see in the darker blue where we are for semester one of this year. And our African-American students have increased their attendance across the district from last year through semester one. So we see these trends continue for semester two. We will have eliminated that gap for the attendance for our Black and African-American students and increased our overall attendance. And so what have we been doing? How have we gotten this? What's happening? What did we do? And so Dr. Ellis Bowen and the LSTs and her team came together and evaluated the attendance procedures. And so this is one of those areas where we can see immediate change in, in next year's report card, right? Based on initiatives that were put in place this year. And so they reviewed and updated our attendance procedures. And through that review and update, obviously, we, we see the fruits of that labor. Then all groups are higher in attendance this year and I, and, and consistent across our, all of our races and ethnicities. They, they're holding student meetings with students. I think she talked about that process of identifying points in time where students would be called in as well as families for these meetings as, as they accumulate absences, conduct risk assessments, and providing mentoring to students. Our wellness, wellness and prevention coordinators are assigning mentors. I serve as a mentor for two students at Vernon Hills. And so that work is really paying off and we see that, that change in, in attendance rate already. So as we double down on those efforts in semester two and continue to implement those, we should see increased attendance for all groups for 2023, 2024 compared to last year. Next slide, please. And now commitment four, looking at equitable resources. Really in the policy, it talks about how it's important for us to determine how we're allocating our resources and move away from a fair, equal approach, right? I'm really following the dollars because how we allocate our funds gives us a good indication of how we prioritize equity as a district. And so metrics that we're gonna be looking at, at, tonight include a reporting on some of our student programs, identifying and reporting on our professional learning programs for staff, and looking at a district budget and how some funds have been equitably allocated. And so we looked at this in really three areas of, of what we are calling resource equity, right? Our capital project prioritization, our professional learning allocation, and our specialized program and staff. So Dan Stanley and his team really took a, a, a head-on approach to what are the areas in terms of how we allocate our resources that we can evaluate for equity, that we can create resources and tools that will allow us to more equitably allocate those resources and then allowing our most, the most needed groups of students to receive allocations and funding in an equitable way, which may mean that we're providing additional resources to certain groups for, for student achievement. So let's dive right in and start off with our professional learning budget. So last year, for the first time, we really evaluated how our staff professional learning opportunities were going to be improved. And so we looked at three big priority areas that were going to drive the work of approving those requests. And so, in, in no particular order, but one of the priorities is that, is it a requirement, right? Is it required for the staff members to attend? If so, then that was, it was awarded points for that. Does it align to our strategic plan goals? Of the three, and with equity and inclusion being one of them, and making sure that it is specifically a part of that action plan that was designed for those three goal areas. And if so, it was awarded points for that. And then third, other considerations that we considered were, does it support our broader strategic goals? Does it impact instruction and providing high, high-impact instruction for our students? Does it build the leadership capacity? And does it support the curriculum and content knowledge? And so these three priorities are how we assess the requests for professional learning to determine what professional learning would be approved for our staff to attend. Next slide. The second area was our capital project criteria. Now you all have seen this rubric already. Dan did a presentation on how we came to our prioritized list of capital projects. But when we think about equity and inclusion from this list, next slide, please, we narrowed it down to, what were the key criteria that was connected to equity? And so we identified for each area that, one, if this, if it is aligned to our equity and inclusion strategic plan goal, that makes it, ensures that it is prioritizing equity. that makes it, ensures that it is prioritizing equity. And then student impact, the impact that it would have for students, looking at the number of students, but also which students are going to be impacted and what that impact would be, whether it would be academic, STL or behavioral. And then looking at our systems improvement, does it improve accessibility for students with disabilities? And does the project have a specific impact on or improve our delivery of instructional services for students to allow them to better receive the intervention, to better receive the instruction that we have provided? And so these areas were the areas that we said, here are those that are directly aligned to our equity goals, our equity policy. And so within that larger, more comprehensive review, it includes making sure that as we prioritize, that equity also played a role in how we were creating that list of prioritized projects. And then lastly, for our specialized programs, this year we did, we did a lot with our EL program and providing additional funds from our budget to support the students and the EL program. And some of those things included additional FTE allocations for a department chair, making sure that there was an administrator designated to overseeing the EL program. Course sections based on the number of students that are enrolling in our EL program. And then our teacher assistants, making sure that we have a proportionate ratio for our teacher assistants to support our students in our EL program. And, and, and when we talk about that ratio, that was something that was developed this year to decide what is the right number of students to each teacher assistant and looking at the setting in which that occurs. And then including in our postings for teaching assistance of preferred language to match the needs of our EL students. And then ongoing program monitoring to ensure that as we are putting these initiatives in place for our EL program, that it is supporting and impacting the achievement for our EL students. And so that work really is three areas in which we are diving into to support the resources that we are providing as a district that aligns to IEPs. And then commitment nine, our community partnerships, looking at how we are supporting and partnering with our community to, to promote equity and inclusion. And we're going to be looking at the partnerships through meetings and opportunities for feedback and two-way communication. Thanks a lot. In our action plan, we specifically highlighted that we wanted to partner with families of underrepresented families within our community and increase that level of engagement. And so we've done some work to do that and get feedback from them and, and engaged with that two-way communication that we talked about in, in the policy. The ways that we've done that, next slide, have been through our family dinners. We've had three family dinners over the course of the implementation of the Equity Action Plan. One for our Black and African American families, one for our Latino families and one for our Asian families. And so with those dinners, we had over 200 family members come out and we had over 200 families to support those, those events, I'm sorry, over 200 participants, over 40 families to support those events and give us an opportunity to have direct conversation with them. These dinners were provided in conjunction with our student affinity groups of, of each area. And so some of the feedback that we received, the top five things that our families said that we asked them, how could District 128 better support your student and your family? And one of the things that they said is, number one, is more opportunities to network with families of color. That they are part of the community as well, which is a reflection of our schools. And so they want more opportunities to spend time with other families that look like them. And, and, and so they appreciated the work that we had done in these initiatives and would like to see them continue. Also an increased effort to promote belonging for families of color, ensuring that our buildings are welcoming and inviting that any correspondences that we send out. And that as they are engaged with our, our schools, that they feel a sense of connection to it. And then they want to host informational sessions for families of color, giving them opportunities to say, we want more information about this particular initiative happening here. And, and, and then providing that information for them. Then offering mentoring opportunities for students of color, making sure that we are providing more of that. And in addition to the work that I talked about earlier with the health, with our wellness and prevention coordinators, we're also bringing in for both Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School, a partnership with the My Brothers Keeper Alliance that will allow an additional opportunity for mentoring for 40 boys of color across, across our district. And then also they wanted to ensure that we continue to work on enhancing the representation in our curriculum. And this work is happening through our curriculum redesign as we are evaluating our core courses, specifically our English and social studies courses, our literacy courses at the ninth grade level to make sure that those courses are representative of the various cultures and diversity within our D128 family. Next slide. And then beyond race and ethnicity, we also have developed, developed our interfaith advisory group. This group met for the first time in December and will continue to meet throughout the course of the year and, and years to come. And it started off in response to our shifts to the operational calendar. But as this group came together, we found that our work really is more than about talking about the calendar and religious holidays. The purpose of this group, next slide, is that we want to make sure that we're here as a, a resource for the district, that we're providing opportunities for that two-way communication between the district and the community that the policy called for. And that we're able to create connections and support systems for our students of various faiths to support our staff in ensuring that we are creating an inclusive environment that allows our students to observe their religious holidays and provide more information for both our students, our staff and our community about the nuances of specific faiths so that we're all, all, that we're building the awareness of all stakeholders across D128. So that work has really transformed into a, a, a larger, more meaningful, more purposeful group that is going to be continuing throughout the course of the year and into next year and years to follow. Now commitment 10 is the final commitment that we will talk about this evening and that is our equity-focused professional learning. And our policy requires that we have both mandatory and voluntary equity-focused professional learning opportunities. And that we report out on the participation of those opportunities. And so for our optional equity-focused professional learning, this semester, last, first semester of last year, D128 offered 87 equity-focused professional learning sessions over the course of, from, from August through December. And we had 1,388 participants enroll in, in those sessions. Topics for those sessions included things like grading for equity, differentiation so that we could provide more culturally responsive interventions for our students. Curriculum development that we talked about, some inclusive service exploration, making sure that we are providing opportunities for our students to receive their services in the, in the least restrictive environment. Some reflection on bias and beliefs, how to use star data for instruction and how to build us a sense of belonging in the classroom. With some of the topics that, that were covered in the first semester. And then our required training for first semester for all teachers was our advocate training from EOS or what we call our trusted adult training. And in this course, it was provided to all staff. Our students took a survey and they indicated who their trusted adults were. As our, as we create our outreach list for students who we are targeting for, our advanced placement opportunities and diagonal movement, we wanted to be able to have a conversation with that student, with someone who they, who they respected, who they identified as that trusted adult. So we trained every, every staff member. Not every staff member may have been tapped in at this particular point in time because we had a targeted group of students that we were focused on getting to enroll in, in a higher level course. But whoever that student identified as a trusted adult, that person was to have that conversation with them and to really inspire them and advocate with them that they had the qualities and the potential to do well in, in, in a, in a more rigorous course. And so we're pleased and happy that our teachers took that initiative because it really speaks volumes to the work that they're doing when our students say, this is somebody that I have a strong relationship with. And it means a lot when we can have those kinds of conversations facilitated with our students who may be reluctant or may have, may have never considered taking a more advanced course. But having it come from this particular individual really would make a, a world of difference for the, for them. So we're pleased that our, our staff took that initiative on. And that is the end of the four commitments that we're reporting out on today. If there are any additional questions, we'd be happy to take those at this time.
For the advocate training, how often is that going to be offered?
Once a year.
Once a year. Okay, thank you.
Not a question, but just a point of celebration, I think, is the, the increase in district-wide attendance. Just want to call attention to what a remarkable, you know, amount of growth that was in such a short time. So Larry, thank you and your team for working so hard on that. It's great.
I only report the data. The kudos to that really goes to Dr. Ellis Bowen and her team who designed an attendance intervention plan, who saw the need for the work to happen to really address what our, our attendance concerns.
Well, I will make sure to celebrate them accordingly. Thank you nonetheless.
Yeah, that's a topic that is being reported nationally as a challenge to recovering some of the learning loss from the pandemic. And the fact that we're making progress, not only in gaps, but in attendance, I think, is definitely something to celebrate. So I want to amplify that.
Larry, the professional learning, was that mostly in-house or was that, is that everybody going out to different workshops and conferences or were most of those opportunities in-house and were they given by our colleagues?
Those are all in-house opportunities that have been led by our, our dynamic facilitators here in District 128. Our instructional coaches put together presentations, our equity coordinators put together presentations. Some of our administrators put together presentations. Some of those things were train the trainer models where our instructional coaches may have gone to a, a training on doable differentiation specifically. And then they came back and provided that, that information to our staff. And that's exactly what we, what we want to happen when we invest in them going, going to these.
Oh, for sure. So are those numbers pretty consistent or are we seeing more participation and more interest?
I'm, I'm just going to jump in on the, there's, that's a combination of different kinds of staff learning. So the ones that Larry has been talking about, because we draw this data from our frontline system where teachers register for anything from a lunch and learn to an after-school session to an all-day training about inclusive practices. So those sessions would be almost teacher or staff because some, it's not only teachers, it's staff also. Staff documentation that we need to be able to give them credit for their licensure. So that's where we pull the data from. So it is a combination of lunch and learns, before-school meetings, during school where they might have needed a sub, an evening course. So I think that have those things increased? I think I'd, I'd have to actually pull the data on that. Larry, do you have a sense if you think those have increased?
Our offerings have increased. I think it's a, it's a, it's a two-layered question. At least I see it as a two-layered question, right? Our offerings have increased. Have, have the number of participants increased? Well, with the offerings increasing, yes. Are the same people taking advantage of those opportunities would also say yes, right? So are we reaching more of our staff members with our optional, with our optional offerings? Not significant.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Oh.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, it doesn't work that way. No, I'm sorry. Yeah. Thank you.
We would appreciate a question by email though, so we can respond. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we're moving on to Bryant now, right? Policy.
Board policies, this is our second reading. And hopefully we can adopt our new updated board policies at our January 30th board meeting. So again, just to review that, I think all the dates are in there, that the background information of us going through and reviewing our current procedures, our current policies, working with IASB on those. And then, and then, you know, going through just from June through September, working in our committee on updating our board policies, reviewing them all, sections one through eight. And so we are bringing the whole board policy to you to be updated. I've included that document. I think some of the other highlighted some of the changes that we have in the document. And our goal is to have this for approval in January. And then following that, we'll probably have some more updates coming right away.
I appreciate the memo, the notes that sort of summarize all the changes. Were very helpful because it's hard to go back to the old policy manual and compare it to the new policy draft. But having that memo, even though we did, we've discussed it, it was very helpful to have. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, it's a lot. I was going to interrupt Dan, but he, he, he looked like he needed to take a walk there. There is a, something came across today, Frantic sent something out about the threshold. So we've had this conversation before, but I thought it would be appropriate to mention. The $25,000 to $35,000 threshold.
The three of us did communicate about that today, yes.
So our threshold, our current board policy is at 25,000. The board policy, because of the timing of us updating our board policy, some of the new changes are not in this. And that's why a new set of recommendations will be coming forward from the ISB press. And so that, that may be included in there. So what, what Don's talking about is that going out for bid, the current threshold is $25,000. And so anything over $25,000, we have to go out for bid. The recommendation, the, the, the language has changed that you can increase that to $35,000. Obviously, so we're not, 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 not in compliance because 25,000, if something is 27, we follow our board policy, we go out for bid on it and it's within the law. It's just a matter of whether or not we want to increase that to 35. So that'll come in our next round. So it's just the odd timing of us trying to get this and ISB, I think Tammy, you know, had indicated maybe that some of those were going to come out in early fall. They got delayed a little bit, their recommendations from ISB. They usually put it together in a whole packet, so.
Okay, and then there was one other. There was a law that changed January 1st for library media centers that said that districts had to either adopt the National American Library Association's Library Bill of Rights or they had to come up with a policy statement that forbids book banning. We already are compliant. We already have as one of the points in our current policy that we will be adopting, that we follow the American Library Association's Library Bill of Rights. So we're good to go there too. And then were there any other comments about board policies? The second reading, we're usually exhausted. I have none others. All right, let's move on.
Educational tours?
Yes.
There's four educational tours that you have access to?
I would like to file this under, there are no dumb questions. What is the?
What is the HOSA club?
So funny, that's the only question.
Because it's not even on the activities list.
Yeah, it's not listed in our student activities.
I think it's Health Occupations. And it might be, I don't, it should be listed on there. But it is one that is connected to our CTE program. And is actually a club that we need to have in existence to be eligible for certain grants. So not only is it a good opportunity.
Not even criticizing or just one for my own.
Yes, I'm, I'm 99% certain that it's Health Occupation Student Something.
Health Occupation Students of America.
Awesome.
Future health professionals.
And then for future reference, can we just have them spell out whatever that club happens to be? Because sometimes I find that I have to go look that up. Or I can get it contextually because they're having a chess tournament or something. So I, I figure that one out, but.
We will, we will put a reminder to spell out all acronyms in the application.
Yes, thank you. If there aren't any questions, employment of employees?
Personnel report with an ESP and a couple coaching extracurricular staff positions?
Any questions? Okay, we're moving on to future agenda items. There are a number of future agenda items listed. Is there anybody that would like to have something else placed on a future agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to adjourn the P and P meeting and move on to F and F.
Great. In Jim's absence, I will take us through F and F. And the first item on our agenda is an invitation for public comment. Is there anybody wishing to address the board? Since we have no one in the audience, we are going to move along. First item for discussion is radon testing.
Is your agenda opening?
Pardon me?
My agenda's not opening. Now it just did.
Did you get it?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So happy radon awareness month.
Is it actually?
It actually is. It's just a coincidence. But let's give a little background as to why we are talking about this, even beyond the background information. Radon testing is not required in the state of Illinois for public schools. So the reason why it came up is because there has been some talk about whether or not it should be required because it's required when you buy real estate. The reason it's required is because radon is a colorless, odorless, tasteless gas that causes lung cancer. It's the second leading cause of lung cancer.
It can also cause any cancer, not just lung cancer.
I did not know that. I thought it was primarily lung cancer. In any event, that's why we are wondering if it's something that we could undertake in our buildings for safety sake. Since we've received these quotes, we did discover that the state of Illinois does provide grant funding. And public schools are one of the areas that they identify as especially as a priority for those grants. So as we move forward, it is something that I know that Dan and his staff are going to take a look at whether or not it's possible for that funding to be available, should we decide to proceed. There is also the opportunity for us to have a staff member certified to perform radon testing so that in the future, we wouldn't have to go out to bid for the additional expense. So we could talk about a little bit the first proposal that we got and then the more recent one that's in the board packet. And maybe some recommendations as to how we might want to think about radon testing for the district.
Yeah, so the first proposal we gave, we asked our environmental consultant for, and they came back higher than any of us would have guessed at $145,000. That was a pretty comprehensive look. Do you, can you talk about that first one that we got?
Basically, in the first one, I sent out maps of all the schools and tried to highlight the areas that are either over across.
Your mic closer.
Highlight the areas either over crawl space or on slab or at grade. When we saw the numbers that came back, realized, you know, we needed to do an in-depth walk, build, walk the building and go classroom by classroom. So I proceeded with that for the second quote. Explained every area when we walked through, we're over crawl space, you're on slab. You know, marked all locations, every classroom, office. You don't do washrooms, you don't do utility closets, things like that. So just occupied rooms. So that's where the second quote came from. We took the initial maps and then we, you know, put an actual scope together.
And then since then, we, you know, we've had some questions that have come in today about it. So a few things. One is we didn't really look to our, the buildings that we leased to have, to look at that. That might be something included that we can just request of the owner. We don't know that. We'll have to look into that and find that out. And then something like this, due to this, the size of the cost, it would need to be bid. There's, while, while, while we're not experts on chemicals and chemistry, not all of us at least, radon testing isn't that complicated to do. And so we can get people to do that. And so it's not something that's exempt from the bidding laws. For example, some people might be able to try to claim like a high-level professional service that you need that, but you wouldn't really have that for something like radon testing. So there's more things that we can investigate in terms of, could you look at a smaller sample size to give you a sense? And then see if that indicates you need to do more testing, like similar what we do with indoor air quality testing. We kind of pick some random spots each year to test, to try to get a sense. And then if something comes up, we'll investigate more further in those specific areas. But we were trying to respond to just a holistic, looking at all of our buildings. What would that, what would that look like to test those? So that's the background information, really, that I have on the testing. And finding out, you know, it's, it's not required by the state. It is, it's recommended by the state, recommended every five years.
Have we ever done it?
Pardon?
Have we ever done it?
Not to my knowledge.
And not to my knowledge either.
So is it worth postponing, going out to bid in order to do some research into the grant opportunities? Or do we have to have a bid that we've approved in order to qualify for grant?
Without having to review any of that grant information, that I couldn't answer that question. I don't know, I don't know yet.
My suggestion would be that we sort of, that we pursue that and that we know in what order we need to do this before we decide whether or not we're going to approve the funds. It's possible that we might have to have a, you know, they call it a shovel-ready project in order to qualify for the grant. And if that's the case, then we can put it back on the agenda and decide whether or not, you know, as a health and safety concern, it's something we want to prioritize or how we want to handle it. But I think we'd probably be best off before we move this to the board agenda for a vote, give the administration a little bit more time to do the research and find out what the, what the correct order of things might be, as well as to find out if that leased building is our responsibility to test or if we can either have the landlord do it or partner with, share the cost with the landlord.
And that wasn't a part of the build-out for transition?
No, since it's, it's not required by state law, it wouldn't have been part of the build-out. And since it's not required by state law, it's technically not the building owner's responsibility. If we were doing a daycare center or something there, then it is state law. You have to, as an example. But there is, I've, I've been hearing rumors that there, there are people trying to push, push legislation to make this a state law, that every, every school has to comply. So I'm not sure where that is.
But that will result in people complaining about unfunded mandates.
Yeah.
It's, it's the double-edged sword. And we say we want these kinds of requirements, but for some districts, this will be very difficult to fund.
Yeah, as you can see, we're, we need to test 428 locations. You know, different areas.
Yeah. Well, and the state has already at least provided some funding and a willingness to fund testing because it's easily, it's not difficult to remediate. And, you know, it's, it's sort of a, it's a preventable situation. So, you know, I appreciate that, you know, that balance between unfunded mandates and, you know, a school like ours has the resources where if we decide to make it a priority, we can do it. But that's not really equitable. So addressing that at the state level would sort of, you know, answer the equity question. Why should well-resourced districts be safer than? But I think for, for our concern, I think I'd like to know, you know, what order we should do things in in order to possibly qualify for a grant. And if the landlord would be willing to partner with us on it. You know, it's not a daycare, but it is, there are students there. And if radon is detected there, that would be beneficial for not only us as a tenant to know, but for, it'd be a benefit to other tenants as well. So it's worth asking if they're willing, I think.
I'd also like to explore the possibility of doing some sampling before just doing a blanket. And the reason that I say that is.
Can you explain what you mean by that?
So however many ground level, because we're not worried about anything that's above second floor. We have positive pressure in the building. It's blowing air out all the time. So radionuclides are probably not building up in this library. But if you are downstairs, then that possibility exists.
And is that the, the proposal that we got, was that just for ground level and below ground?
So it would be lower level below, to, to, there's a lower level here, but the majority of the school is on ground level or has a crawl space below it. So.
But it's, it's correct that upper levels are not.
Second floor would not.
That's not recommended.
So the way it comes in is through cracks in the foundation or cracks in the flooring. Yes, it's a odorless, colorless gas, comes from uranium decay underground, works its way up. And if you happen to have uranium over there, then it'll show up over there, but it won't show up over here. So houses right next to each other, one can have radon and the other won't. Just depends on whether or not it has a pathway. So sampling, I think, would save us some money. And if you detect it, then go in with more aggressive. Because my guess is that most of the spaces here are all going to be under the threshold, well under the threshold. And if you find a space that's even at the threshold or a little above, then you can really dial in and find out where it is.
So I believe you.
I'm also not an expert on radon.
And that's why, in order to protect the district's liability, we should check that theory with the environmental company that gave us a quote and make sure that doing that sampling would satisfy
True.
the requirements. Because what I don't want to happen is us to have a situation where we had undetected radon and then somebody said, well, you said that we.
Right.
Right? And that's not a position I would ever want you or our board to be in. So let's check that and see if it's possible to do just a sampling if the environmental company is on board with that. And if so, then I think that's an excellent approach.
One of the things that you said, Lisa, I just wanted to maybe clarify. You said with the requirements. I just want to circle back and make sure this is not a requirement.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. I meant in order to consider the testing be valid.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Because all of this is a potential proactive measure by the Board of Education. This is not a requirement.
Okay, I will check with our consultants about, you know, random testing. But, you know, from my experience in situations like this, you run the same thing, one house next to another. There could be a crack in the floor in one room and you do the room next door, it doesn't show up.
Right.
Now you're given a false sense of security or, you know, comfort to people that there's no radon when there actually is in the room next door. So I personally advise, advise against it, but I will check into it and, you know, see if it is a viable option.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Just that, we're, we're going to look at the grand in terms of the timeline of what would be the ideal timeline for that. Looking to our leased buildings and partnering with the owners or something like that. And then looking at as a potential sampling option as an alternative first step.
Perfect. And then how much time do you think is reasonable before we see this on a future agenda?
I I'm trying to discern if you're asking me, like, are you really asking me, can we seize an answer to these questions at the January board meeting? Versus like a February, the next February committee meeting?
I just wanted to set the expectation of when it would be realistic to see this on another agenda. How much time do you need?
I think it's most realistic at the February committee meeting.
That's fine.
I.
Then if we could just add that to future agenda items for February committee? And if we don't have the information at that time, we'll reevaluate when it's practical to add it.
Yes.
Thank you. Vernon Hills High School chiller replacement.
Yeah, so we are now entering into like the slew of our summer 2024 capital projects. And so the ones that we presented back in October, Mark has been working diligently on the scope and bidding those out. And so we have a number of them here tonight, not all of them. And so we have provided you updated information on the total for the summer. And then each of these kind of ticking off because there are distinct bids that we want to make sure we acknowledge. And the, the law requires the board to react to each bid. We did, I believe, get attached pictures and visual so that you all have that as well as a reference point. So with that, maybe let me just walk through each one and see how we go. Is that all right?
Perfect.
All right, so the, for the, for the chiller, we had. Boy, I know I wrote this down. Bless you. Oh, the chiller, sorry, the chiller, this has not bid. This is a co-op pricing contract with Omnia. This is very similar to what we did with the LHS chiller for, is, what's this, is that installed right now?
They, they, it was just arrived to the storage building, so we'll be starting it here end of January, beginning of February.
So extremely similar process, just replicated for Vernon Hills. Except the chillers don't work exactly the same way, I think, right?
Yeah, it's different types, different type of chiller.
Thank you. So the proposal is 1.1 million 170,000, which is lower than 1.2 that we estimated. Does have a contingency of 100,000 in there. This one is pretty straightforward in terms of that. It's not like we had competitive business, a train, a co-op pricing.
Any questions about the chiller?
Does that eventually go out to bid or is it because it's part of the co-op, we don't have to bid it?
It is already considered bid through the co-op pricing.
So we had meetings and brought individual contractors in and they put all the pricing together and then came with the proposal under co-op pricing.
And this is, this is not unique necessarily to the chiller, but it's more the whole context. I did put this note in each of the ones. We are trending under in our total so far based on this. So in order to offset, not to offset, in response to that, Mark is looking to add more HVAC, more HVAC in hallway ceiling and lighting to do those because we need to do them anyways. And so if these come under, he's looking to add more there, but we don't have all that information exactly yet. So I just want to give that context for that. That will come at a future meeting.
Moving on to the Vernon Hills High School roof.
Roof replacements, so we originally had listed on there roofs 10, 11, 2, and 2A. Those came in underbid and Mark had an alternate that was added for roof nine. And so taking the recommendation with roof nine, Ritterford is the low bid with a total cost of 1.1629 million for that project, which is less than what we estimated at 1.4. Mark, do you want to talk a little bit about that one? Because that came in a bit under what we estimated. Do you have a sense of what that is attributable to?
Pricing's held on, on roofing materials, um, and labor, uh, across the board. Everybody's been bidding early. So I think it's, everybody's been locking their bids in. They actually were doing roofs in September. So, um, we're fortunate enough to, you know, we went out early, went out in December, did it. And, um, able to lock in, you know, a pricing so people are scheduling, getting all their work locked in for the summer. So it was pretty competitive. Um, the bids were, were fairly close across the board. So, um, I think that going out the, you know, early this time, um, a little bit earlier, has helped us. And with pricing, you know, holding on materials also helps.
And I just want to circle back to something we talked about at previous meeting in terms of, uh, looking at solar as well for these roofs. So we don't have that yet for this. What we've been working on is like a, like a, a bigger look at solar, almost like a catch-up to the roofs that are, we've already done and these ones that we'd be doing. So we're, we're kind of working on that. That's kind of a bigger catch-up that we're just not quite ready yet. So that information will be coming shortly, but we're, we're just not ready with that.
And that's separate because you explained to me, it's a separate contractor, it's separate materials. It is not something that these roofing contractors could have bid on or helped us with.
Correct, that was our understanding. There are a few people out there that would do the whole package. But with our roof consultant and the way we do our roofs, um, our roof consultant would be, wouldn't be involved. So, um, at this point, not knowing what we know or what we don't know, about the solar and how you purchase it, the different options you have. You know, for future, if future projects, it could be possible to do it all in, with one company. But for right now, um, it's best, I think, for us to separate it. And obviously our roofs are already done. So the roofs, you know, that are available to do right away are already in place. So you would, we wouldn't be using a roofing contractor. But as we learn more about the process, we can look into that for the future. You know, for future roofs on Vernon Hills and Louisville High School.
Okay.
You mean having both the company that does solar and does roofing at the same time? That's what you'd be looking into in the future?
It's, would be an option. Or we bid it at the same time. We have our solar layout and we do the roof and then we tell our roofing company, here, this is where we put it. The solar company comes in afterwards, um, and installs the equipment. So ideally, we'll get to that point, you know, once we know more about funding and, and things like that, um, in the future, you know, budget-wise. And if we know if the structure can handle it, you know, then we can look at, you know, doing the same projects, you know, doing it in the same year or coincide, you know, finish the roof and then the roofing panels can go on in the summer. I mean, in the fall, that type of thing, so.
So there's no such thing as being solar-ready? I thought that's what we were talking about, being solar-ready.
So-
These bids are not for roofs to be solar-ready?
Basically, our roofs will be solar. You could put solar panels on them. We've upgraded our insulation and, uh, and they're not stone ballast roof anymore. So they are a fully adhered, uh, system. So they are ready to put solar panels on them.
So we would not be incurring additional expense by accepting these bids and then doing solar when we're ready?
You're, you're going to have an additional expense with solar because there's no design?
No, I guess that's not additional. Are, it's basically, are we, are we putting good money after bad or bad? If we were to decide to do solar in the future, would it have been cheaper today to be solar-ready? I mean, I'm kind of out of, this is not my area, but criticisms have come that we're, we're going to incur additional expense.
There's going to be additional-
Outside of just putting solar in.
Yeah, there will be additional expense in, in tie-downs. You'll have to open a roof. You'll have to tie-downs, you have to go down to the structure. But without having a layout and all your specific materials, you're framing all that totally designed and knowing exactly where you have to put it in, you have to have that solar package done first before the roofer can start to rough. So if we don't, you know, present, we would, there, you know, we hadn't discussed doing the solar before we did the roof. There wasn't, uh, as far as I know, there wasn't a budget for it. But we just are doing our roofs that need to be done, uh, that are over 20 years old, you know? And we're replacing the roofs that have had the most leaks and we're working our way around the buildings.
But I know I read in, in the packet for this month, and we've talked about before, that there are sections of the Vernon Hills High School roof that are, uh, solar-ready in that they, they could handle a solar application on top of what we have installed.
Yes.
Of course the expense-
Anything we've installed can handle a solar application. The present roofs are on there, no, because they have a stone roof ballast. Basically, the roofing is glued around the edges and they have rock holding it down. It's like laying down tarp and pinning the corners and the whole middle just flaps loose. So if we remove the stone, the roof could blow off in heavy winds. Now we have a fully adhered surface. The stone's not necessary. So we're having engineering, the stone is so much weight per square foot. We're removing that, we're increasing our insulation, and our new roofing material is so much per square foot, leaving us the, theoretically, the, the pound per square foot of the existing structure to hold the additional weight of your solar panels and your, your ballast that go with solar panels. It all depends on your design, um, of the system that you put on the roof.
So am I, am I correct that there are sections of Vernon Hills High School roof that are solar-ready?
Yes. Yes.
Absolutely. So we have, we have some roofs that we've replaced within the last few years that absolutely can hold panels. The question is just how many panels can it hold? And there's a, there's a due consideration in terms of where those roofs are and whether or not they'll actually get any sun to have panels on them. Because if you remember, like at Vernon Hills, it has that really tall, what's it called?
Slide stage.
That thing, and that blocks part, other parts of other roofs for a good portion of the time, depending on the sun. So we're trying to look at those things to see what, what would be, um, uh, because it kind of is, would be terrible if we put solar panels on a roof that is never going to get sunlight. So we're, want to make sure we're kind of conscious of that too. That's why we're looking at a, like a bigger thing. I think to the, I mean, two things. One is when we're talking about solar-ready, what we intend to communicate is that the roof will be able to hold solar panels. Right now, we have a lot of roofs that you can't add any weight to. So you can't add anything, let alone solar panels, to the roofs. Our intention is that as we go in for each roof, that we're doing them in a way that they'll be able to hold weight of, of solar panels. How many, it depends on the panels and maybe they get lighter. Like, there's a lot of things that go into it, the term, in terms of how much maybe you can put to maximize that. That, that we would need a, a solar designer to kind of tell us specifically. But the idea is so that it can hold weight of solar panels. When you're asking about, um, would this be cheaper if you did both at the same time? Right? Essentially is kind of what you're asking. And I, the, the answer has to be yes. It would be cheaper if we replaced the entire Vernon Hills roof at one time. Right? There's, there's a sense that like, if you wanted to save money and do something, you absolutely can do more at the same time and get more better economies of scale. That has to be mathematically true. We're, we're trying to navigate the logistics of doing the roofs. And, and just the, the, the size of that roof is just more than what we feel we can handle. So that's why we're chunking it and trying to do it in a way that's more cyclical because then 20 years from now, we don't want to have to replace the entire roof again at one time. We'd rather like segment it out. The idea of solar is still new to us and we don't have an established solar system to replicate across all of our roofs. And so what we were trying to look at is a way to catch up, not only, a way to look at not only these roofs, but the other roofs that we already have, that we've already replaced those roofs, to try to catch us up, to get us current, um, and hopefully establish some type of replicable solar system. Because it, you know, as we kind of grow this over the years, we would like to look at that. The other, the other thing that I'm reminded of is when we were looking at solar, really the request was to look at what, what would be the price of solar as we were doing these roofs to get a sense of, of whether we want to do the roof and do solar at the same time. And so I think the idea is, if you really wanted to do it and save money, you already have a decided, you already have a decided scope that includes solar and that it can be designed towards that way. That's not just been this, that's real, just not been the situation we've been in, that we said, we know that we want this scope to include solar. That is not where we were with these roofs. It was that we were going to replace these roofs and we wanted to look at what would it look like to add solar to those roofs. And so we're trying to respond to that differently. So, so to circle back, it would be more, you, you would absolutely mathematically need to save money if you did it all together at the same time. That's just not the place that we were at.
Wouldn't we need to have more of a plan, a systemic plan for solar to figure out like what- We don't have a sustainability policy that would guide adding something like this and we don't have the money. We don't have, we, we just, we don't, we're not ready to jump in with both feet as much as it's a great idea to solar. So I think there are a few steps that we have to have in place first, both to guide us as a policy and what we're prioritizing for capital projects. Because we've gone to great lengths to prioritize our capital projects. We have a very specific plan in place that's guided, uh, by our strategic plan. And we're not going to just blow that up randomly. We're, we're going to continue to proceed with following our strategic plan, budgeting, and, you know, the, the, all of those questions, I think, have to be answered before we're ready to jump in and add, add something, um, as costly to our entire system as this would be. So I think, I think there's a couple of steps we have to go through, uh, both from a financial standpoint as well as a policy standpoint.
A little pushback. It is possible to have roofs installed that would cost us nothing. We are choosing not to do that.
Is, are you sure that's true?
Yeah. I think that we can find systems where we rent our roof space. The problem is we don't own those solar panels then. We don't get the full benefit out of them. But it, it is possible to have roofs installed where somebody else pays for the system. I have a friend that's putting a megawatt in a desert because there's somebody that wants to get carbon offsets. And so that, that organization's not going to spend a dime because somebody else wants to. Those, those things are available, but we're not, I don't think we are aggressively investigating them.
So I think we don't have a policy or a strategic plan that provokes us to aggressively investigate them. And I don't think it's advisable to set aside all the work we've done, both from a budgeting standpoint and a strategic plan standpoint, to just decide to add it because it's a good thing to do. I think what we need to do is allow the administration to pursue it at our direction if we decide to direct it. But that it has to be a, a much more comprehensive conversation that I think we can have right now when we're looking to-
I agree. The first time I brought this up was in 2019. 2024, five years later. So I understand COVID happened. I understand there were supply chain issues. I also understand that this isn't actually one of the topics of conversation tonight. Solar's not on the agenda. But I, I think that there are other ways. If we had five different companies come in and pitch to us what they could do for us, well, then we'd have more information than we have right now. But I guarantee you, there are companies who will, for very little cost, if any, put solar on our roofs.
That's great. And I mean, the only pushback is we would have to actually examine what those proposals are and how they fit into our budget and our strategic plan.
And that takes, I understand, it takes time from our staff. And we don't have a specific sustainability policy, but we could.
If I could just add, so we, back to what I said earlier, like, we are looking at a bigger solar catch-up. And because I've said before, like, we've looked at our prioritized capital list and where solar ranked in terms of us putting additional dollars in is, is lower down the list. There are other things that are higher on that list. And I know that I have a, I know this about myself, is I can have a bias of the perfect, letting the enemy of, be the enemy of the good. And I know that about myself. And so, uh, a few months ago, we started talking about how can we look at adding solar that wouldn't affect our capital funding, um, to do that. And so that's the problem, we're just not quite there yet. We are working on this. We're just not quite ready to share that information yet, um, about what that could look like. And so we are looking at a way to try to see what it would look like to have us get caught up on solar with the roofs that we have and potentially at something that doesn't really affect us in terms of needing to put a lot of cash down upfront for something. There's different options you have to pay for solar, uh, over a period of time. You still end up paying for it one way or another. It's just the question of are you paying cash upfront now or are you really spreading that cost over a period of time in terms of you're buying energy instead of you're buying, um, the solar panels necessarily? And so, so I'm, but we're, we're not, we're not there yet. And so I want to be able to present with you, here are the roofs that we've looked at. Here's what the system could look like. Here are the ways that you could pay for something and then see, see what you think. So we are in process with that right now. That's not, that, I'm going to bring that information back to you.
That's great. And I, I have heard you talking about it since you first brought it up. So in order to avoid frustration, could you set our expectation as to when it would be realistic for us to receive that presentation? Or do you want to think about it and let us know at an upcoming meeting when we could expect to receive that information from you?
That's probably not info I could give you right now. I would need to get back to you.
Yeah.
But I can and I-
Yeah. Let us, just in order to avoid frustration, let us know when it would be realistic to expect, um, a presentation about our solar options.
It may not avoid the frustration, but-
To whatever extent we can do that.
We're still friends, Dan.
I, I, I hear you and, and I agree, it's something that we've been talking about for a really long time. And I, I agree with your statement that we sort of had to set it aside during COVID. But it's important that we look at it and see where it fits in with everything that we're doing. We, we've been talking about it for a long time, so.
I, I think the essence of the question, I'm going to speak a little bit for you, Cara, but I had the same question is, I think this roof fixing, this roof is required. It's like the first step in order for us to do with, anything to do with solar in the future, is how I understand it. But the essence of the question is, let's say we do solar in a year or two years or whenever in the future. We don't want to rip out what we just did here, throw it away and let's start something new before we can add solar on top of it. I think that's the essence of the question. Not to say let's do solar along with the roof.
That, that would, that would not happen.
Okay.
The word that's in my head is that would be unconscionable to bring that to you, to spend a million dollars on a roof and then to come to you here later and rip it all up. That's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about is, um, they would do changes to the roof and we would, we would absolutely make sure that, you know, like the, the anchor, the, all the, the solar things, we'd make sure those are done carefully to not as, affect the integrity of the roof. But we're not talking about anything that would undo, uh, the work that these roof replacements are doing.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, any other discussion about this roof replacement? Because it is something we will be voting on, we'll be taking action at the board meeting, correct? Any other questions?
No.
Okay, moving on to the LHS masonry repairs.
Uh, so for masonry, we had them split out originally in our capital plan for, uh, the CT wing here, uh, over there at LHS. for the CT wing here over there at LHS. Let's hear it, like I'm pointing, it's over there, literally. And then the base, and then the baseball dugout was a separate thing. The masonry bid together because it's the masonry work. Those came in higher than what we estimated. And so the low bid was Burgland at eighty-nine point five thousand. That's higher, we estimated fifty thousand and so we were, we were not correct on there. But that will do the mason, the, the masonry repairs to the, to the wing, the CT wing over here and then the, the baseball dugout. Anything else I'm missing?
No, that's it. There's the varsity baseball dugouts.
Okay, any questions? Moving on, that segues us to the baseball dugout roofing replacement at LHS.
Now the roof that's on top of the dugout, that, the low bid is A1 Roofing sixty-seven, five fifty. That is less than the seventy thousand dollar estimate. And that one is pretty straightforward, three bids received on that one.
Great, any questions?
No.
Okay, moving on to the Vernon Hills High School hallway carpet replacement.
Yes, this one is trying to finish up the hallway carpet replacement. And so the proposal is a hundred, just under a hundred and eighty thousand with Shaw. That's co-op pricing. It's less than the, than the three hundred thousand dollar estimate, but we are still waiting on a component that is, includes the, help me out here, the, the pool mezzanine.
The pool mezzanine for visitors.
So that, that is included in our three hundred estimate, but we don't have that information yet. So we still would like to move forward with the carpet. If the pool mezzanine comes in too high, we're just going to pause that until next year.
Pause the mezzanine part.
Yes.
Yeah.
Pause the mezzanine, but the other one, we want to get that carpet moving forward, so.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, at a previous meeting, I asked you if carpeting was a good decision going forward for Vernon Hills High School? That if a more price effective option and an option that might give us more longevity in our floors would be some type of hard flooring? And so I'm still curious what that answer might be.
You're, yeah, you're right. I now, I totally forgot that you asked that, I'm so sorry.
Don't sweat it.
I, I remember you asked, well, I don't remember you asking, but I remember that question now. And I definitely did not relay that to Mark, so.
It's okay, Dan.
Did I put you in the spot or not? I think the question is just like, what if you change the hallway? What if you change out, what if you change the hallway flooring to?
Tile.
Tile or VCT or something that you don't have to replace every X number of years, but you saw it.
I'm, not sure about pricing, if it's about the same. Obviously longevity, they, they presently say you're supposed to replace your VCT tile, you know, the tile squares.
Yeah.
They give a longevity of ten to fifteen years. But obviously we know we get longer life, longer life out of it than that, so.
What's the carpet replacement recommendation?
Ten, I thought, isn't it?
It's, it's about same, it's fifteen, twenty years depending on the carpet.
And if I remember, I, I think because of the two-story nature of that and because it's a gathering area, both for students and for visitors, I think the original design was carpeting as part of a noise remediation. And that's why it extended beyond. So if we want to ask for something else, I, I guess.
The building is requested hallway and carpets, carpeted hallways. It's been that way, I'm not sure if it is just preference because of sound. Obviously the sound is better, less noise when people walk down the hallways. I think the future question comes to, when it comes to classrooms, do you carpet the classrooms or do you tile the classrooms at that point?
I think that's a better question. I, I think finding out the difference in longevity and cost is a great thing to ask and let us know.
Well, and currently the classrooms at Vernon Hills, some of them are carpeted, but like the lab spaces obviously are not.
There's, there's only a few, yeah, the few lab spaces that, that we have are. Science labs are not carpeted.
Right.
Foods lab is not. Foods lab.
Food, food labs are not carpeted.
I don't think the STEM lab was carpeted.
I don't think you're right, STEM.
There's no carpeting in, you know.
Gymnasiums, things like that.
Yeah, gymnasiums, but it's for the wood shop, auto shop. Art rooms aren't carpeted, but.
Anything prone to, to mess and spill certainly.
But.
So could we, could we?
Other rooms are, are carpeted.
Could we look at this for a longer term question? The reason I ask is because we just replaced the carpeting, the foyer carpeting. And that would be a situation where we'd be ripping out the contiguous nature of the floor. I don't want to suggest that we rip that out to replace it with a hard floor, but could, could we ask the question for the future? So that as we replace things, if we're going to phase in a different type of flooring, we could do it in a.
Yeah, time appropriate manner.
The, the one hallway that is, oh, there's two section hallway just past the cafeteria and the gyms is a section of tile that goes to the first staircase. And then the, the north wing where the classes for the arts are there, you know, for that hallway is tiled. And then in between the gyms, so there's three major hallways that are tiled, the rest of them are carpeted. There, there's only three, three sections of hallway left to finish all the carpeting in the hallways. And this would be the last three sections of carpeting for.
Yeah, I, I'm really asking more as like a long-term solution so that every, you know, whatever it is, fifteen years, however long the lifespan is of this carpeting, that we're not replacing it when there could be a better option that would outlast it. But not only that, I, I think of, I think of my poor children who are very environmentally allergy prone and, you know, carpeting, carpeting just doesn't do the trick typically. We, you know, we try and avoid carpeting when possible in our life, but just a, just a thought that even environmentally, it may be preferable to have hard floors for our students.
I was talking to a carpeting guy at the triple I conference. Because that's what you do when you're down in the basement and you're talking to the vendors. He said, and I'm pretty sure that what we're doing is we're replacing this rolled carpeting with tiled, right?
Yes.
Boxes of tiles.
Yes.
So what the vendor was telling me was that the cost savings are greater because you don't replace all the tiles anymore. Now, people tend to walk down the middle of the hallway, so that's what gets worn out first. People tend to sit or just go to their lockers at the edges of the hallway, so those get worn out later. So you could actually replace the middle sections at a lower cost than replacing all of it if you use rolled carpeting. Now, whether or not there's any truth to that, he was a vendor. I wasn't even buying. But that's the idea is that there is a cost savings as a result of using carpet tiles.
Which this proposal is carpet tiles.
Right.
But do we replace all of our carpet tiles? Are only certain carpet tiles when we're replacing carpet?
So we, we're, so this, the, the, kind of the phase we're wrapping up here that's been over a few years has been replacing the sheet carpet with the tiles. So we haven't lived, I mean, I mean, this space is carpet tiled.
This is carpet tiled.
But I don't know, we haven't really lived, I don't know how long we've lived with the carpet tiles that we've done stuff like that.
Well, we, we, the first year we had the carpet tile in the foyer and we did all the construction, that carpet tile was replaced because I found, found it faulty and approved it to manufacturer, so they replaced the whole floor. But we've been using that same carpet design, except on the one staircase in the, in the main foyer going up. But the same carpet tile has gone down throughout school. Keeping the same, and then when the new wing was built, the classrooms that do have carpet have that carpet tile in it as well as the hallways. But yeah, I will, I will get back, I'll get some carpet versus some other type of.
Material.
Some other type of tile.
Thank you so much.
Either luxury vinyl or VCT or.
LVT, LVP, there's so many letters now.
Okay, any other, anything else on the replacements before we move to our next agenda item, which is our community engagement update? Seeing none, I will turn it over to Dan and Mary.
While Dan is passing out our homework assignment, just to put it in context, we heard from Creative Entourage in December and approved our agreement with them. This is the first of the action steps that they ask us to consider and that is working with the board to create a charge statement from the Board of Education to the facilitating committee that they described. So Mary, Dan and I worked on a draft of that to share with you tonight and to get some feedback. They also encouraged us to start gathering names for people to serve on this facilitating committee. So we'll give you just sixty seconds to read over this draft and then Mary and I will, and Dan will give additional information and take.
And may I just say, so we had the cold weather, so I printed these at home and I said I could print them, I didn't realize that my printer does this, so that's my printer.
And can we add a copy of this to the board packet as well? For anybody in the public that wants to review it?
Yes, actually, and Dan can also pull it up on the screen. So as we talk about it, the public can see that too.
Oh, great, thank you. So in bullet point number two, allow the board to understand the community's educational beliefs, perceptions and desires. I think beliefs, perceptions and goals might be a clearer term.
I actually like aspirations because it's a little open-ended, you know, because you're talking about, sorry, you're talking about the community out there. They may not come with a set of goals.
Two different things.
Right, right.
This is the bullet point.
Right.
Perception.
So aspirations.
This is perceptions and aspirations.
Yep, so.
So she was talking about this one.
You're talking about the top one.
I'm talking about, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry, you, you looked at the.
Number bullet point, or not bullet point, number two.
Right, I, yes, I'm at the top, the second bullet point.
So the way they recommended that we structure this is to have an introduction and then to focus on the collaboration, why collaborating with the community is important in general. The second part is, oh, and by the way, in order to effectively do these collaboration efforts, we're going to need a representative committee. And here are the products, the charge that we want that committee to generate for us. So it's almost like the top bullet list is the why. Why, why do we value community input in this big decision? The second part is what do we want from this committee before May twentieth? So if that helps frame those two lists a little better.
It does, and then I would leave it as desires. I would undo the change I suggested because really the charge from the Board of Education will define goals.
Right, and I think that would be more the committee to help up. Again, that's going from the, what do fifty-six thousand people in Vernon, across our communities want? Those are bigger picture things. The committee's going to help distill those down to priorities and recommended actions that the board consider taking.
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
But then the, the first bullet point can stay as aspirations and we make the change in the top one also to say aspirations, because then it matches. You're seeking their aspirations and then we are outlining the community's aspirations again to just match those two things up.
The other item that I think we need to understand from our community is also what's their willingness to spend, right? There is a financial appetite or a spend appetite, if you will.
Well, we tried to capture that in.
Actionable steps.
The fourth bullet. Create actionable steps to fund and implement the plan. Because we, we sort of saw that it was important when we approved the engagement with this firm that we have an opt-out. Should the community, through the first few phases of this work, say we are not interested in additional funding, that we'd be able to pause it? So we wouldn't necessarily develop a lot more of the details of the plan because that would be something that the community would have. You know, when we say what are your beliefs, perceptions and desires about the future of our facilities? And so if they say, yes, we want high-quality, very innovative facilities in which our students can learn and we're willing to pay for it, then we get on the, okay, so how much? And, and, and go into those details of the funding plan. But we do want this document to capture your intentions. So as, as we're talking this through, I think we can even get more and more clear with our language.
Then I think we should have as part of number three, if there is an early exit that emerges from the desires and aspirations. We want to do all these things, but we don't really want to pay for it or not yet. I think that needs to be a clear sort of a deliverable, if you will.
Can we implement wording like that in number four?
Yep. Well, you wouldn't get to number four if the outcome is we don't really want to do anything or not yet. So I, I, what I'm saying is we need to get an early indicator of do we want to proceed or do we want to pause? And that needs to be a decision point early enough. So we don't go and do all this work just to get to, or we don't really want to spend.
I think it, oh, go ahead.
One, one thing there is, right? We are going to get the priorities from the community in the community engagement, right? If we could, as a part of creating the actionable steps to fund and implement the plan, have like a framework that we say that this is what we are using. We are using your priorities. They are giving feedback on resource allocation and facility improvements, how they want to spend the money. We use that as input to create the funding plan and implementation plan. And we make it clear to them because then that way we are utilizing their inputs to create and fund this plan.
I, I agree, and I think the conversation we had last week was this is an iterative process also. So as the community learns about our needs and as they feel like they're having meaningful input into the priorities, their willingness to fund that work improves. So we can't at the very beginning say, are you willing to fund this? It has to be something where we've educated them on the needs, on what it could mean to student learning. And we've listened and made adjustments on the priorities. And then we say, is this something that you're willing to fund? And, and that would be our exit point before we go on more with a campaign or putting it on the ballot or some other things like that.
And what I'm trying to say is that we showcase to them that this input has, how that input has played into this funding plan. Like this is, you indicated X on the resource allocation. How would you like to use the resources? And that's what drove the priorities here. We obviously give them a chance to provide further feedback, but then that way they see the rationale on how the plan came about.
I'm, I'm curious as to how the order of the top five, was that something that was discussed? Because I don't want to muddle with it if that was their best recommendation, they're.
The bullet points on the top?
The top five bullet points, the order of them.
That was the brainchild of Dan, Mary and I, so we have not received. They gave us lots of, almost like sentence stems and they gave us good examples of charges that have proved to be very clear from other school districts. So we then took what we knew, our. Our situation was their guidance and their samples and pulled that together for this. So we are meeting with them again on Thursday afternoon. So that's why we wanted to get your input tonight, so we can take the feedback that you want us to incorporate, and we will then conference with them on Thursday afternoon to finalize it.
I, I might be in isolation, but I think the last bullet part, the last bullet point is the strongest, and that is the essence of the why we are trying to strengthen the communication engagement, and I would say input from the community. And that is, that is why we even aligned ourselves with this company, because we value their input, and I would, I think.
But the, the word engagement, though, makes it a two-way conversation. Because yes, we definitely want the input, but we also want the engagement in terms of it being two-way.
Oh, I don't care if you add input. I just think that should be number one.
I see you're suggesting...
I'm saying that if we're doing this in priority, that is probably the number one. I, I would start off with that, but I don't...
I did, I did quote you this afternoon when I said, "I think this one is very important to Cara."
Which one? The bottom one?
The bottom one, yes.
Hate being predictable.
No, not predictable. I, I just, I remember you voicing how important that was to you in December. And so of all of the different things we could have listed, we made sure that one was in the top five.
I could be in isolation, so you, that's important to me, and like, I don't know that...
Maybe, maybe we weave it into some of the other bullet points, because I feel the way it is ordered right now, you give them something tangible, and then you talk about what's the outcome that we are trying to achieve with this, right? Like, if you don't give them something tangible upfront, you kind of start losing them, because they feel it's just qualitative and you're just talking about things. Here, you're giving things back to them on what we are trying to achieve, very, very concrete things.
I would agree, and I think just as a communication strategy, and Mary, please give me your input on this. You sort of build toward the point.
Yeah.
And the point is number five. The point is all of this leads to strengthening communication engagement with the community. So I'm kind of okay with it being the finale.
Yeah.
But I also don't have a strong feeling if we want to move it to be the first one. But I do think it has more of a qualitative sense, and it's a little bit more general. And if we have it as the grand finale, that's sort of the point of all of it.
Yep.
And we won't lose anyone.
That's the punchline.
And I, and I like the word...
If they read that far.
And I like the word input, because that is sort of the reason
Yeah.
while we, while we are doing this.
So instead of in the second bullet point on the top, allowing the board to understand, maybe it is gather input
Yep.
on the community's educational beliefs, perceptions, and desires.
So that, so that was, that was, I would just want to go that, because that was an intentional word there. Because originally, we had like to, to hear, to hear their input. And I, I, just having lived through a few surveys that we've done over the last year or two here, I don't know that people want to necessarily... Getting their input is not enough. Understanding them, I think, is, is what you're trying to achieve, which is different than hearing them.
Yeah, that's a good point.
We can gather the information, but if, if we don't, what are, what are you going to do with it?
Right.
So that, that was why there was an intentional decision to write the word "understand" there, even though that word is somewhat ambiguous, too. But the, the intention was to try to make sure that we're, we're not just hearing them. We're, we're, the, the goal is to seek to understand them.
Right, good point. So then I would ask then, if we're really trying to add the word "input" somewhere, is there somewhere else that those of you that feel strongly they'd like to see that word somewhere, where do you suggest it go? And Mary, maybe you could help us with that as well with your...
Could I also provide two slightly bigger picture comments on this? One is, we want, we'd like your input tonight, but also recognizing maybe you, sometimes you're like me, and I need to think about it for a little bit. And so that we could give you some time to think about it and give us this information, at least by Thursday sometimes, so that we could incorporate that into what we're going to share with Creative Entourage. The other thing is, we could also...
The only problem with that suggestion is we can't discuss it contemporaneously. And I want to be sure that we have consensus as opposed to one board member in very good intentions emailing you something they'd like to change, but not having the consensus of the board. And this is the, this is really the...
Yes, a con is if we waited to get your feedback, you all wouldn't be able to process that feedback without violating the Open Meetings Act. So this is your chance to process together as a group.
I think a lot of this is stylistic. I think you've kind of comprehen, you've gotten most of all of the discussion that we had back in December. They heard us, and I leave it to the professionals. I don't find anything in here. There doesn't seem to be anything missing and nothing offensive.
And I think we also want to definitely get the input from the folks at Creative Entourage. Right, so there could be some further refinements.
And they, they could absolutely maybe have an opinion on that fifth bullet point. Should that be first, or shouldn't it be for some reason? You know, they, they probably could.
Don't say that.
Yeah, they, they could, they could add context and...
The only other thing I would add maybe, and like, charge from the Board of Education, second bullet, is it's not just student achievement and co-curricular. There's also health and wellness, and, you know, make that sort of a complete, a complete student achievement.
We had a lot of, we had curriculum and all academic, we had all these different words in there, and that's why we just narrowed it down to achievement, because we thought it was mental health. It kind of encompassed everything.
I think the more specific we are, though, the better, because we, we want to demonstrate that we're focused on students and not just their academic achievement, but their whole selves.
I think adding something about well-being would help round it out.
Yep.
So I appreciate that comment, so. We, we can definitely work with them to add that component of whole child.
Okay, any other comments?
I, I think it's great. I'm, I'm all good with it. I tried really hard to find something that I could, you know, tweak. I got nothing.
Yay, that is a, the compliment, a compliment of the highest order for Dan, Mary, and Denise.
Yeah, you shouldn't expect much. I get that.
So, so the second thing that we need input from the board on, in addition to this language, so thank you very much, would be ideas for people we would want to consider inviting to participate on this committee. We need to invite more people than we think would serve, because some will say no, not many, according to what the consultants say once we've identified people who we think have the time, because they're predicting two to three meetings a month between February, March, April, and May. So it's a, it's a compressed amount of time, but it will be two to three meetings per month, and they just want possible participants to know that going into it. They recommend that we look for people who, they say, are involved in the schools, but not the same old people who typically lead everything. So not, they call it not your usual suspects. And, and to, to be thinking about differences in geographical location among the different, differences in age, differences in background. So we would be looking for each of you to, and again separately, email us, email me, and then I will, we, we did the same thing with the district leadership team last week, and this is just a brainstorm list. But you know neighbors, you know other people who you think might have a passion for supporting the district in this way, and we would appreciate your input. And again, that would not be violating, oh my, you're just adding possible participants to a list.
Those are people that are going to serve on the committee. That, that's not the people who, everybody will be invited to attend.
Yes.
So just because somebody is not brainstormed on the list to serve on the committee doesn't mean that their input and counsel will not be taken into consideration.
Would it be helpful if I send the board the same form that we're using for everyone? And then we'll have all the same criteria.
That would be wonderful.
How big is the committee?
Twenty-five people approximately.
Yes.
And so that leads us to our last question for the board. They recommend that we have two board members serve on the committee. So this would be two to three meetings in addition to our regular meetings. So this is a compressed, big ask for two of you. But I want each of you to consider if this is one area of interest that you have or one way that you think would, would be best using your talents in how you serve the board. But when Lisa and I talked, we wanted to have this open for people to say, "Yeah, I'm interested," and to see if that's one, two, three people. But I would also be looking for potential volunteers.
Are these meetings anticipated to be held primarily during like the spring months, one over the summer? Do we know?
Well, we're looking to have a written report by May 15th, so.
Got it, right, spring and late winter, yeah.
Yes, yeah, so we would imagine this group beginning its work in early February and completing its work middle of May. With some people carrying on, depending upon what the recommendation is and what the vote, if we do end up placing anything on the ballot, some of these people in most districts continue on to serve in some sort of other vote yes kind of committee. But that would, it would reshape into something different that would no longer have direct ties to the district. But many people who serve in this sort of leadership and exploration find satisfaction and get attached to the issue and, and see it through to the end through voting day.
And would these meetings occur in the evenings or during the workday?
From what they say, the committee decides its meeting schedule, but typically it's to try and get as many people to be able to attend as possible. So I think they probably do have evening meetings, so working parents and community members can participate, but I don't think it would be exclusively evening meetings. I think that would be up to the committee membership to try and find the best possible calendar.
And did you say two a month, you said, from now to May, two a month?
Two to three, and there could be, and again, not everybody would have to attend every meeting. And what I mean by that is there's the planning part we need to do, and then there could be, let's say, three building tours. And they might want one person or, you know, each committee person to attend one of those three. So that might be a regular meeting of the committee and attending one town hall meeting or one facilities tour or something like that. So I also, when I, when I'm talking about meetings, I don't think it's all sitting around a table and doing meetings. There'll be a few of those to organize the work, but it would also be participation at, I would say, more community events would be another way that their time would be used. So two to three of those kinds of obligations as a committee member.
Do you have like a write-up of that? Because if we are going to reach out to people, we know that they're going to ask some of these questions. It'll be easier to share something consistent with them so they can evaluate if they can.
So I think at this stage, when we're asked, and please correct me if I'm wrong, when we're asked to submit names, we're not looking to go have conversations with people. And I think, I think that will be done in a centralized way when those people are invited.
Which would be the beginning of February, I think.
And that's something that would come from district office.
Yeah.
Got it.
And would be part of the work of the, that's part of the work they do for us, is taking this list, vetting it down, especially by, because they want it to be a very well-represented sample. So if we want 25, we're probably going to need to have 35 people on the list. You know what I mean? And then they'll help us consultation with what we know about these people, what they know about good demographics and good mixes. To have an effective committee, we'll then together do the final invite.
Okay, got it, thanks.
How soon do you need names?
Well, we're meeting with them Thursday, so. I believe we're looking at the list on Thursday, right?
We're taking our first pass at the list on Thursday. Again, this is coming very quick. If we want to start the community engagement in February, they want this committee meeting, like the first week in February, because nothing can happen until this committee forms.
Could we say noon on Thursday, then? And you all have the link now. I already sent it.
Okay.
Any volunteers?
I'd love to, but I'm already missing the first meeting.
Yeah, I would love to as well, but I'm out of town in the first two weeks of February, so if we can work around that, then I would love to participate after.
I'm sorry, I was brainstorming when you may have mentioned this, but did you mention the first, the first or second meeting dates this week?
No, those have not been identified, but we imagine the first or second week in February, just to get that, because this...
Was in the last week of January, from what I recall.
Okay, I'm happy to throw my head in.
So John, you were a love to, but can't?
I, I'll be gone through the second week of February. Well, I'll be back in time for the next board meeting in February, which is the 12th.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gone from 31st Jan through 15th Feb, but I'm here after that.
So if we can work around that schedule, we can...
And again, this doesn't preclude other board members from potentially attending a town hall meeting or something like that, but we can't have more than two people be a member of the committee or violating the Open Meetings Act. So this is to, to make sure the board stays informed and we have the board's perspective at the table. But we'll make sure that if you're not serving on this committee, that's what the last sentence is about, having frequent communication and transparent notification to the community and the board of every step that this committee moves forward.
Is it possible, I mean, I know I want to, I would like to participate. I just don't know that I can commit to the timeframe that you're talking about. Can we do this as partners and have our own backup? So that if I can't go to a meeting, Sanel can go in my place? I mean, I don't, I don't mind putting four names on as committee members if you can't, but at least share some of the burden.
You can ask them on Thursday.
Yeah.
I don't know that answer.
I'll be your partner.
I actually think that's really smart, especially since we don't know all the specific dates yet. I mean, I'm volunteering right now, but having notes, right? So I, I actually support that idea.
Yeah.
I also haven't asked my wife.
That is true.
And to be honest, I love the idea of you doing that, especially if you're up for reelection. Not because you're politicians, but because it gives the community a chance to sit with you and get to know you and sort of see you in action. And I think that's a timely thing to coincide with that cycle.
I can reach out to Jennifer and Ron tomorrow and ask them.
See if we can have two pairs that share.
Yes.
May I just clarify a point? Would our involvement in these committees then kind of be, not the end of our involvement, but like in any official capacity and moving forward, you know, any, any support of the impending referendum or whatever it's going to be?
That's a good question.
Because, do you know what I'm saying? Like, if, if now I'm volunteering to be part of this committee, and then down the line, suddenly I'm a lead, but I'm also, it seems like a lot of conflict is...
So there is a separation, and maybe one of the administrators could explain it. But once we do decide to move forward, there's a point at which we're no longer involved. So I think the answer to that question is no. It's not, it would not preclude you, because I think we're all precluded from involvement after a certain point.
Right, so you're basically, for all intents and purposes, done after that phase in that, in that part of the work.
You are done helping to meet that, that charge.
Yes.
So the charge from the board would apply then to you, too, to be one of the people at the table to gather the input that we're seeking and to help prioritize the list and to do all of those things. You're one of many then. Once the recommendation comes to the board, and if you would, if their recommendation is to move forward and put something on the ballot, and you accept that recommendation, once you say, "Yes, we want to put that on the ballot," then you shift from any advocacy for yes to advocacy for voting.
Got it.
And that is it. How important it is for everyone in our community to vote. And that will be the threshold of what we can do as elected officials in advocating for the outcome. The other people on the committee who are not elected officials can continue on with a vote yes campaign, should they choose.
Thank you for clarifying. That's exactly what I needed to know.
And we can make sure that we've got more clear guidance, because part of behind that is you're not spending public money on, on a vote yes campaign. You can't do that in Illinois. So that, that's part of the reason why, is, is spending money on things like that.
Yeah.
You can take it out of my salary.
Baby's first referendum for a lot of us.
So we appreciate your real-time suggestions to make this an even better document. We look forward to receiving some recommendations you might have for potential people to serve on the committee, and we'll, we'll look for those from you by noon on... And we'll look for those from you by noon on Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the school fees review.
All right, listen, I know no one likes to talk about school fees, almost as much as they don't like to talk about taxes. But here's what I would say, here's what I will say. Our district continues to face increasing costs. And as a board, there are really only two sources of revenue that you can, that you realistically control. One is the property taxes and the other one is school fees. It is part of our system to annually look at property taxes and part of the rules associated with property taxes of why we have to look at that every year and we have to do the things that we're doing. School fees don't have those kinds of restrictions. And so it has been this district's practice to look at them every X number of years. And so with me looking at everything, what I'm recommending is that I believe now is the time for the board to review your fees. You can review your fees and decide we're good as it is. Or you can make changes, but I, it, I think it is important for it to be in front of you and for you to review these fees. So my intention is first and foremost to give you transparency into your fees and let you have a chance to review them. Also, with what I wanted to do is present some type of way that you could process what a revision could look like. I'm not saying this is the one that I think is the one you should do, I'm trying to give you something to respond to. And so looking at the different data points, that's why I, and I tried to do something that I could rationally explain in terms of looking at. So it's really, the idea is to see your fees and then give you something to react to, to see what you think and what you want to do with fees, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of options available to you. The other thing that I do want to say is there's a, was a really good sleuth that noticed I had an error. One of my fees, I had our activity pass as a fifty dollars, it is not, it is twenty-five, so that person knows who they are, thank you. The total dollar amounts don't change, just that fee in that specific list is incorrect on our, our things. There might be more errors too, but I just wanted to be transparent with that. So with that, you have the attachments. I did look at a summary of surveys of districts. I looked at, tried to find a way to get it apples to apples in terms of the basic fee, which I did a blend of the four years fees, because some districts charge different fees for freshmen versus sophomores versus juniors versus seniors. So I averaged those and then I added in the tech fees. Some districts include their tech fee in their basic fee, like we do. Other districts, it's not. And so I wanted to get as close to apples to apples as I could, it's never going to be perfect. Because there's a lot of different fees that districts could be utilizing. And then some districts do, some and some districts don't do others. And so that's a little tricky to get around.
Dan, for those listening at home, when was the last time our fees were reviewed in this way?
I believe the last time our fees were reviewed was seventeen, eighteen. Like right when I started, they had already kind of done it. So it was in the middle of being done, so it was about seven years ago.
So these are the student fees that have been charged yearly to our students since that time?
Yes, some of the fees are optional, so it kind of depends on the situation. Like, like driver's ed isn't charged to every student, but it's every student that's participated in driver's ed. That, that's what I would say. The fees haven't, I don't believe the fees have changed since then.
Okay, may I ask a question, kind of piggybacking off that? I, I only know from elementary school fees and they're kind of all the same. So at the high school level, it's more of an, not à la carte, but you pay for what you are getting essentially, right? My, my student isn't paying for a graduation fee if they're a sophomore. And my student isn't going to pay for parking if they're a freshman necessarily, that, that's how it goes. It's kind of this à la carte model.
Zooming out thirty thousand foot view, the idea of how do you fund education? Does everybody help fund education whether you use it or not? And our system is largely designed around that. So you have people in our community that don't participate in our school system that absolutely fund the majority of our school system. And then you have the idea of how much do the users of that system pay? And so school fees is kind of an attempt to move the needle a little bit in terms of, all right, all right, now that you're using it, you're going to pay a little bit more. And that in theory is relieving some of the people that aren't using it. And so that's where you're seeing some of these itemized fees out. You could have, in theory, one fee that kind of covers everything and then no additional fees. There's a lot of philosophies you could have about fees, for sure. It ranges a full spectrum. This one, and what we have been doing and what I have noticed many, many other high school districts do is that there's a basic amount that everybody pays, that's the basic fee. And then there's the, you pay as you use it. So when you're in driver's ed, you have this fee if you want to park, based on, you know, how they do their rules, you pay this fee, things like that.
And are those additional fees assessed at the, at the start of, let's say, the school year or at registration? I'm not sure when fees are.
Registration.
So it's not, you know, at semester two, certain fees are collected that weren't collected? Like, for instance, if you're taking driver's ed semester two, you didn't take, take semester one, they were still assessed at the beginning of the year? Or whenever registration?
It's an annual fee that we charge. If the student had a schedule change, that might change the fees, but that would be on a rare occasion.
And athletics, dependent upon what season you participate in.
Yeah, to be honest, so to answer your question, like, for instance, if they knew they were going to take semester two of driver's ed, did they pay the fee at the beginning? I honestly don't know that answer. I can find it out, but I don't know that exact.
I'm pretty sure I know the answer. And your fees are tacked on when they are incurred. So you would get a, you're reg, you now have a balance on your student account.
You're giving me the crash course here, which I appreciate, because I just don't know. And then earlier, sorry, last question here. You mentioned that other peer districts have like, you know, the freshman fee or the sophomore fee, based on grade level. You're saying we do not do that, we have this base level for everyone and then?
Yeah, it is more common that districts have a consistent fee across grade level. What you see sometimes, for, so for example, one of the, one of the districts actually charges a four hundred dollar tech fee to freshmen only. And then no fee for sophomore, junior, senior, versus what we do is we charge a hundred dollars to every year. So six and one have dozen of the other. You see things like that, or sometimes as freshmen, they may include PE uniform and lock fee. But then it's not in the future years' basic fees. But what they have is just a replacement. If you want a replacement, then you've got to pay, you know, whatever amount it is to get a new uniform. But if you can somehow keep yours for all four years, is an example. That's usually what I've seen in terms of why there's a difference.
Thank you so much.
So could you reiterate, when was the last time we changed our fees?
Seven years ago was the last time we updated the fees. There was a multi-year rollout to that, because it was kind of rolled out, like freshman, then juniors, then sophomores and senior. The right way, sorry, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, to do that. But that fee plan was determined seven years ago. And so, so times change, things change. And so that's why I have this in front of you to look at. So in terms of the analysis, I tried to look at what other districts do, I tried to give you an average. And then even do like a, kind of like a percentile, it's technically percent ranked, but it functions essentially as a percentile. What that means is, so for example, if you see basic fee percent rank fifty, that means we are higher than fifty percent of the, of the other districts that are listed. If you see, for instance, eleven, that means we're only higher than eleven percent. So you can see there are some fees based on those things that, if you look individually, we are either on the higher end, we're very, very much on the very, very low end on some of these fees.
Like driver's ed?
Driver's ed. And, so, but I didn't want to miss the forest for the trees. So that's why I tried to look at a max, I guess, if you will. So we were talking, I guess this is a senior who's graduating that is taking driver's ed and is in one sports. So I tried to like, give a theoretical max maybe. And that's, I tried to do that too, to look at the whole picture, because, you know, you could, you know.
I don't know if they do this in Vernon Hills, but in Libertyville, they're able to split a parking spot. Is that going, are you going to continue that? So many times that parking fee can be split between two drivers.
I think we would allow that to get, whatever that building level practice is, we would. I, I don't see this fee structure changing those options.
And I'm just curious, do most students choose? I know I always chose the activity pass for my kids. So in essence, the actual basic fee would be going down by twenty-five dollars if you assumed that you were getting an activity pass. Because you're going from three hundred to three twenty-five and that's including now, and then what would have been a fifty dollar activity pass.
So that's the one that it's twenty-five, twenty-five dollars, not fifty.
Oh, oh, so it's the same.
That was the, I would, that's the first identified mistake.
Yeah, it's late, sorry. So in essence, the basic fee is pretty much staying the same. If you include the activity fee is now included in there, just registration with technology and everything else is an add-on.
And it's just an option to consider. So I think what, what was going through my mind is, you know, the activity pass is intended to allow students to participate in, I think it's home basketball, football games, something else probably. And the idea is maybe this could be a way to remove a barrier, to allow more students to participate in school functions. So that, so it was just an idea that you could maybe do that and that might offset.
No, I love that, I mean, I think it's.
So the total fees, I'm looking at the twenty twenty-four student fees survey. It looks like.
There's two of them.
So tell me, what's, what are the total, what's the total annual revenue that we collect in student fees?
Oh, that is information that I don't have in here. It's around a million, but I couldn't, I don't have an exact number for you. It's around a million, because when we-
Ballpark is good enough.
Ballpark is around a million, maybe one point one, because when we, during COVID, we we had already collected the fees, but we refunded them, it was right around a million dollars at that point. So, and that was slightly different enrollment, but it's around there.
So I am completely on board with the suggested new fee with technology and incorporating the activity pass to encourage everybody to attend and remove that barrier. I am strongly in favor of increasing our fees for driver's ed, they're too low. What I am not in favor of is increasing our parking fees. Because if you look at what, what, certainly our cost to maintain the asphalt and the striping is and snow removal has gone up in the last seven years. That's indisputable. But I think our revenue, our other revenue source is so much bigger and has gone up every year that because we're not giving any additional value to the users in parking, I, I'm okay with leaving the parking fee where it is. But I support increasing the driver's ed fee and raising the current enrollment fee from three hundred to three twenty-five and including the activity pass.
One, to the point about the driver's ed, I may not, I may have forgotten to write this in there. The general assembly has to allow you to charge that much. So you have to do a waiver process to change the fee to get to a level that's, I think the, the max is like two fifty without a waiver. Does that sound right, Carol? Yeah, so two fifty without a waiver, so you could move it to two fifty on a whim. But you have to have the general assembly approve it. It's extremely common, and if you could notice, there's many districts that charge more than that. And so you would have to go through that process. We, even if today you said, yep, let's do it, we would not be able to actually legally do that until the thank you, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Which I'm fine with, because it gives our residents plenty of runway and notice that that fee will be changed. And I think it's because our costs to have that program have demonstrably gone up. And our fee is lower than our peer districts. I, I think that's a fair reassessment. And I'm open if anybody disagrees with me about the parking, but that feels a little nickel and dimey to me because they're not getting any additional value or services. And again, the cost to maintain our parking facilities is not insignificant, but our much larger revenue source that has gone up every year should be-
But it's not just maintenance, it's also security.
Security, sure.
We have, we have three or four adults every morning and every afternoon out supervising student parking primarily and parent drop-off, which can be a challenge too, but a lot of people to supervise. Safe, safe students walking through the parking lots and driving. And it, it is not just hardware, it's staffing to make sure that's a safe place.
Is that one of the things that we could phase in? If we do make a change, that we wouldn't change the parking fee? The first year, we could change it the second or the third?
Or so drastically?
I mean, we're increasing athletics by almost fifty percent. Why would we not increase? I, I don't know that that is realistic and I don't know, and I, almost a little bit pecuniary to people who want to participate. That's, it's a hefty fee when you're not planning on it, especially if you have three kids. I know there's a family max, but that happens every trimester, every season. So you have somebody who plays a two-sport athlete or a three-sport athlete, you're six hundred bucks in with two kids. So I, I don't know, I would start looking at percentages wise. So we're almost increasing athletics by fifty percent. And if you're suggesting that we don't do anything with parking, I think there's a lot of opportunities for kids to try and share a spot and make that a little bit more.
To give context, the reason why I would have changed any particular fee is based on what I saw in terms of how it ranked with the other ones. And so I tried to look at a number that put it, I think, mostly like around fifty or higher than that, if I saw that. I mean, I didn't think we need to be the top, not that like someone is going to see our fees and then go move to another district because of the school fees. So like, there's, there's limits to this in terms of analysis. So there's also, there's a sense of what is other, what are other districts? But then there's also the sense of what is the change for people that is a very real thing, for sure.
And to have driver's ed still be at the twenty-eighth percent, when I know, when I, even three years ago, you couldn't get a private at any driver's education facility for under seven hundred dollars. So I don't, I mean, that is a benefit.
So that, that's a fault just of the math. So if you change that number to three fifty-one, one dollar more, it immediately goes to like eighty-three, eighty-third percentile. Because again, percentile means it is higher than twenty-eight percent of the, on the list. So it, that one dollar difference, so basically the three fifty puts you right in line with the vast majority of the other districts. That's where percentile fails you.
And I agree, it's a phenomenal value for what you get. I would also say, as a parent of an athlete, the, the value that you get in terms of the coaching, the time spent, the activities, the the non-classroom educational value of that far exceeds whatever we charge. And I, I, I did notice that I was taking exception with the smaller thing. But I actually support the athletics being at the, at the higher rate. I think for the value that, and because there's that family maximum, when I think about all the time spent when somebody is in one of those programs, it is, it is well worth this increased cost. And I would also note, could we review?
But that's per season, right? The family max is per season. It's not per year.
No, the family max is per year. So when the sixty was put in place, that, that gave you a maximum of five sports.
For family?
For family. And then, so now with a hundred, it's, it's, you're maxing out at three sports. So if you have two kids and they're in three sports, both, both of them, six sports total, you're only playing, you're only paying with that family limit for three out of the six. Because you're, it's three hundred dollars. So i- if the new one goes to a hundred dollars and your bill should be six hundred dollars, you're only paying three hundred. The old limit, the old sixty dollars, based off of the athletics family limit, allow your family to get into five sports, anything over five. So the hundred dollar increase by not changing the family limit, you are getting a little bit more of a break for a family.
With two kids, playing two, two sports, you're probably going to hit the family limit. Whereas with two kids and two sports, you did not hit the family.
I mean, you'll hit the family limit if you have one kid with three sports. It's three hundred dollars, I mean, you're not getting a break, but yes.
When you break that down, the hours that our coaches spend between practices and events and the skills that are built, I feel like that's a justifiable fee. I feel like there's tremendous value.
Well, I think that's priceless. I don't think the whole activity fee, so I'm not seeing the student, the athletic activity fee as supporting a hundred percent our coaches. They're paid well more than what that activity fee is. I mean, that's kind of to make the district whole, that's what the sport activity fee, right? It's not an, it's not a one-for-one ratio, the hundred dollars completely supports all of the coaches. We know that the coaches make more- We know that the coaches make more than.
Oh, my goodness, no.
Those participants and their $100. So I understand that. I am thinking about families that are making decisions. Now, I also know that we also have some waivers. Students can always apply for waivers.
Could we review what the fee waiver situation is? How a family qualifies for fee waivers and how many roughly we have or what percentage of that?
I would not know right now what percentage. We use the fee waiver is analogous to our families on free reduced lunch. And I know that percentage, I, I don't know if we have an exact alignment between that number and the number of students who also take advantage of the fee waiver for athletics. We try, LSTs and social workers and other people try to make sure that we're doing that cross-analysis. But there are, I believe it's about 16% of students at Vernon Hills are eligible for free reduced lunch and about 9% at Libertyville are eligible, if I recall our last data.
Like district-wide, I think it's around 11. So that, I, I don't know the specific split between the buildings. It's around 11. And actually, now that you're all talking through this, I don't actually think the total dollar impact will be that high. I think it'll be lower because I didn't really, I would need to refine that a little bit. So I don't think it would be. The, the dollar impact for athletics, like the $100, but the total impact, because there's going to be people that cap out that aren't capping out now. And so I would need to reduce that by some, it still would have a, an impact for sure on the total dollar amount, but it won't be quite that high, I don't think.
Okay, so what, what would you like in terms of feedback or consensus from the board?
Well, I first love that you're talking about this. So thank you for at least entertaining the discussion. Can you state your question again? I'm so sorry.
What do you need from us?
What do I need from you?
In terms of direction or next steps?
Like if we were satisfied with everything that you have presented here, then what happens? Or if we wanted to change something, then what happens?
So I, I think my first question is, there more information that, that you feel, find would be helpful to help you potentially make a decision towards something like this? And then I guess your, your sense of where you like this, if you would like an option like this presented for you to approve, or if you would like to see something that's slightly modified to approve?
I'm fine approving as is.
I think we've been taking some notes on, on some of the things. Driver's ed, thumbs up. We know that we would need to communicate that that would be implemented over two years because we can only go up to 250 without getting state approval. So that would be, the full implementation would be in 26, excuse me, 25, 26. But I think this conversation can then be mapped on to the few adjustments you've asked, and we could bring it back for approval of a fee structure.
Yeah.
I was also fine with the parking fee because I never paid for it. My kids paid for it. Like they.
They didn't get money from you, though?
No.
Okay.
They had to.
Work.
It's a $1.50 a day.
Regardless of who's footing the bill, I think the jump from 170 to 250 is too high for no change in what they're getting.
But if they are allowed, if they are allowed to share parking passes, which I'm not sure they are right now allowed in VHS at least, I just don't know.
It's not a practice that Vernon Hills High School has in place.
Can, if we put that, then that might encourage them to share more and fewer students on the road and fewer students in the parking lot. So it will also say there's an environmental impact that we are producing with that, right? So it might be justifiable and we might, it's, it's okay to increase the fee. I mean, I have a high schooler, I know, and I'm, I'm personally okay with it.
That's a clever idea. I actually just had a question about kind of the, the change. So I, I understand the logic in needing to increase our fees over time and that's what, you know, partly we use to run the district. But what is the logic behind the dollar amount change? So if parking went from, what was it, 170 to 250 in this proposed plan? What, what are we using to account for that $80 change, I guess, right? Because we're not, it may bring us up to our peers, you know, within their windows a little more certainly, but certainly those amounts aren't just thrown out there arbitrarily. So can you give me a little more info as to why 80? Why not 30?
It was purely based on percent rank with the peer districts. So, you know, I, I would imagine what we collect in parking for sure gets eaten up by the amount of money we spend to maintain and to maintain that parking and the roads associated with that. So I, this, similar with really all of these fees, these really just offset. I mean, the parking offsets probably a higher percentage than the other ones, like the Athletic is a small dent that's a five, $6 million program. And so generating $150,000 is not a big impact to that. Even generating on basic fee, several hundred thousand dollars on a system that is a multimillion dollar organization, that's not a very large impact. The driver's ed, even that is probably roughly a tenth of what the cost of that program is. Parking probably has a bigger impact in terms of the total cost if I'm thinking about the various parking lots, but I, I mean, I'm just thinking, like, how much did it cost when we replaced the parking lots at Vernon Hills? Was it 800,000? It was like that versus 300. I'm just saying, if you're talking, I don't know, if it's 300,000 for every parking lot that we replace, and we're doing that every, okay. So like it, meaning it, it, it's not, it's not nothing in terms of that cost, but it probably has a bigger portion than maybe some of those other ones.
So you're saying we're talking about this too much? So no, I, I think that brings me to the thought, if it has such a minimal impact on a $100 million budget, in a year where we're asking people to consider a D sub and we've raised taxes, leave it alone except for the use fees. So driver's ed, apply for the increase to 350. Athletics, increase from 60 to 100 and keep the max at 300. But leave everything else alone. And if next year we want to revisit the rest of the fees, depending on whether or not the D sub is successful, let's, let's not do this now, except for the use fees, except for driver's ed.
One thing we can do, which can be a hybrid option, is we have 170 if you're not sharing parking, and if you want to share parking, you can do 250 and two people can share the parking.
So let's see, that would only apply for Vernon Hills High School because they're already doing that at Libertyville High School. I would like to get the building input before we.
Yeah.
Suggest, because to us, it might seem like a great idea, but the building level, I think, needs to have their input of the feasibility because there may be some things that we're not thinking about in terms of how it applies to a different.
That's fair.
So let's, let's maybe float that as an option from a sustainability standpoint. But I, I'm curious about the thoughts about, but let's take a step back and see if this has.
Agreed. On the rest of them.
If fees have some minimal impact on our $100 million budget, maybe right now is not the time to have this conversation. Maybe we.
There's wisdom in that.
Maybe we just look at the use fees, the, the driver's ed and the athletics and wait and revisit this next year.
That's kind of where I was as well when I saw this.
Or in December.
Yeah, because we have like two years of higher taxes, right? We've had increased our taxes consistently. We have a D sub going. I think it just feels like maybe not the right time to add additional fees. I think the driver's ed is, and athletics is a, is a good one.
The one other idea I heard a lot of positive response to was the idea of incorporating the activity pass into the basic fees. And that's really what we were talking about doing, going from 300 to 325, but including the activity fee. So it really, on very, very few people would be an increase. So I, I think if we talked about it that way, like we're just going to roll that in rather than having it be a separate user fee, we really weren't expecting additional.
Is the activity pass optional or?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you don't have an activity pass, you could pay at the door.
Yep.
Or if a student doesn't want to attend, then they don't incur any fees. But I think our thinking is we want to encourage engagement. And we know the direct impact that student involvement has on educational outcomes. So I, I really like that, that idea. Let's roll it in.
Yeah.
So that hopefully it, it, it does what we hope it will, and it will increase engagement.
Yeah, I mean, and to a lot of these, it's, it's all about the messaging, right? Like, we wouldn't have the right messaging on some of the areas just to increase the price because we are trying to get in line when we are asking for other increases, but activity pass has good messaging around it. And maybe we could look at some of the other ones to see what's the right positive messaging around it if we are increasing, what are they getting back more in return?
Yeah, I don't think anybody would question that driver's ed fee. Everybody that has a kid who looks at private driver's ed knows that if you get it for 350, it is a bloody bargain. And we do have some years, correct me if I'm wrong, where we have kids who want to sign up for driver's ed who can't because it's full.
All of our sophomores are able to do it. We have some young, some freshmen.
Right, right, right. If there's some freshmen.
We do have spaces to meet currently all the need of our sophomores who are turning 16, yes, and juniors.
Thank you for the clarification, yeah. I don't think we have to sell that, that one. That one's so obvious. And, and again, families that qualify for a fee waiver still qualify for a fee waiver.
Yeah, but that's a hard threshold to meet, especially in our community. So there's many families that that's going to be a hard, it's going to be a hard decision. I, I kind of disagree with the athletics, but I, I don't think that should be increased. If, if it's under the same logic and argument of let's make this palatable and now is not a time to raise prices. Most of our students, we ask them to participate, and I don't think that $100,000 is worth making kids or families have to choose.
Yeah. That, I think that does make sense. What, can we just, I, I don't want to.
I know, it's not.
Further discussion, but can we just thumbs up or thumbs down on raising the athletic fees or just in the context of this is not the year to do it, thumbs down, leave the athletics fees where they are right now? Can everybody sort of give their?
So down is stay the same.
Down is stay the same.
Down is stay the same, yes?
What?
Down is stay the same.
Down is stay the same.
Raise them, keep them the same.
Okay, so it looks like then the only thing that we're going to do is roll the activity fee into the general fee and apply for the 350 for driver's ed, not for 24, 25, but for 25, 26, which we, the soonest that we could do it. And then we can revisit this again in December. Let's talk about it because we'll have a different perspective in December.
And look at the feasibility for sharing parking spaces at VHS.
Right, thank you for the reminder. Yeah, let's get some building level input.
Yeah.
On that idea.
I think it might be happening, but I will check with Principal Killiam. I just, for some reason, when I was over there, I thought, I heard, like, it's one of those things where like in my mind, I'm hearing them talk about a challenge they had with students sharing parking passes. So they maybe have implemented that recently.
I think it was a problem that people were sharing them, didn't pay for them so that they could.
So in Libertyville, you get one, when you share a spot, two seniors have to agree that they have one spot. They only get one ticket.
Yes.
So either they are going to.
Yes.
Switch it off with each other or like my son shared a spot with another who did not have a car, so he had to pick him up every morning and they got one spot and they got to split the spots. There's a lot of ways to do it, but it's only one pass.
So we'll find out.
Yes, we will do that.
Anything else on the school fees? Dan, go ahead.
I was just going to mention Vernon Hills has a free lot now.
They have for a while, the junior lot over by the baseball fields, right?
Over by the baseball fields, yeah. They have, it's now free.
Oh, there, there used to be a charge.
There used to be a charge, it's now free. So you, if you want to walk, you're a senior, you don't have to pay a fee. So it's, there's a considerable amount of parking over there than used to be when I started here 10 years ago. Now that it's free, it's, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for.
So just a little FYI.
Great, no, that's a good point. Thank you. Okay, anything else on the school fees? Future agenda items we have listed, they're the same ones that we looked at at the last meeting. So it is 858 and we will consider ourselves adjourned.
I just wanted to maybe add one item to the future, and that is, is there an update on the cafeteria? Design? Or whatever is going on with that?
Yeah, give you a quick update.
Yeah, we'll add it to.
For a future update.
Future update.
Oh, future update, okay.
Yeah. So then we will declare the facilities and finance meeting adjourned, and we will take a quick bio break and then convene for a special board of education meeting. Will we be taking any action coming out of that meeting?
No action will be taken.
Okay, so after the special board meeting, we will adjourn, no further action, no action will be taken. Thank you, everybody.